Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I need looking for an approval by motion of our agenda, please. Thank you, Brian. You have a second, Jeff? Any more discussion on the agenda? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none. All right, council comments? Anybody?
I've got a comment.
Okay.
Um, today is lease appreciation day and that prompted me to remember that last year for the police appreciation week, um, at the last minute, we got pizza together and sent out to the sheriff's department. And I was thinking this year, maybe we might could do something and be a little more prepared than at the last minute.
Okay.
If the council's interested.
All about it. Anybody else get any, uh, discussion ideas? That's something that we could also look at in our vision and we'll have time there.
Absolutely.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I have pizza and. All right.
We took our pizza from the pizza company down here and it's real good.
So Matt, I'm going to understand you're going to discuss these in your right here, right? I'll leave it. I'll leave it. Okay. Anything else on council comments? Hear none? Okay, manager update.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, good evening, council. And so just, uh, just, uh, orient ourselves a little bit here. There are a few things that, uh, people who may not have attended the last meeting may see different within the room now. And so one of those items also is manager updates instead of staff updates. And so moving forward, I had, do have updates for our staff. Uh, that's important for the public to know. But I'll just quickly, uh, mention as the mayor, uh, uh, pointed out, right now we are currently using, uh, the lav or lavalier mics. Uh, this is one of the steps that we have done through the assessment process of the AV needs within this, uh, within this facility. And so the first step is that we did bring a consultant in to start looking at what we currently have and how we can make sure that our sound quality is good enough, both in-house, but then also, uh, online. And they've been doing those adjustments and, and our staff has been working diligently to make sure that works appropriately. Uh, but also one of their recommendations was again to move to these lavalier mics. So I'd recommend for, uh, council, again, it's the same process with the box. Make sure that you were turned on. It's a mute on, mute off. But to make sure you're about six inches or six to eight inches from, uh, your mouth, right underneath you, it's going to be the best opportunity to be heard. You can speak forward. You don't have to look down, uh, in order to speak and it should be picked up. Um, I'm going, I'm going to be looking at Kevin because he's going to be checking to make sure that he can actually hear us. Uh, and if they, we need to make adjustments, we will. Um, a couple of other things that you see in the room, we have moved, uh, per council direction at the last meeting during the organizational meeting. The podium is over to the corner. That's where public comment is going to be, uh, moving forward. And then for the front here will be for presentations from staff and, and other consultants that may be coming in. Again, just for ease of being able to spread out and provide that presentation to you all. So, uh, moving away from those, the, the technical stuff, I do have quite a, a, a few other announcements, all exciting announcements. Uh, as you all know, the, uh, orally Taylor, our tax collector announced her retirement effective January 31st. And although we're going to very much miss her here in the town of Mills River for all the years of service that she's provided here. I am excited to announce that Kristen Rintul has accepted the position of tax collector and will be, uh, brought forward effective February 1st. And so you can see below your, on your consent agenda, there's an item to appoint her effective February 1st and at a later date, we will go through the ceremonial, uh, squaring in, uh, with council, but then also making sure that she's ready to go on February 1st. So I just want to congratulate her. We're excited to have her in this role. She's been working very hard to prepare for that role. And we know that she's going to be, uh, an asset as she moves into that, uh, into that position. So congratulations, Kristen, and thank you. In other news, uh, we also have another, uh, retirement, uh, that I get to announce today. Uh, Sue Powell, our finance director, has announced her retirement effective March 1st. And again, uh, for, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a sad day. It's a bittersweet day, I would say, for, uh, for the town of Mills River. She is a, uh, the first employee here with the town. And that's seen so much within her time here. So we're going to miss, uh, her presence within the organization and her knowledge and, and, and just joy that she brings every day. Uh, but we're excited for her well-earned retirement, uh, for the town. And we have a little bit of time to work as hard as possible to make sure we glean everything we can from her before she leaves. So just congratulations, Sue, on a well-earned retirement from the town. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
With that being said, there are a couple of job postings that are available within the town of Mills River. If you yourself are looking to, uh, join our community, uh, join our organization or, uh, know someone who is, we are currently posting for the finance director position, as I just mentioned, which will be closing on January 24th. Uh, that's a Friday. So again, uh, you can find all the information on millshiver.org. And then also with Kristen's promotion to the tax collector position, we do have an administrative assistant position that is open, open until filled, uh, with first review of applications on January 22nd. So again, if you are interested or you know anyone that is, uh, do want to come join our, uh, our organization, uh, please, uh, please check those out and pass it along. The, uh, a couple of other items, uh, uh, Jim Player, uh, Sergeant Jim Player, uh, now retired Sergeant Jim Player as, uh, uh, now, uh, in fact, his retirement was effective December 31st. We know that there was, uh, some conversation about, there was an event that was going to be held here on Saturday, uh, from, uh, the player family for people wanting to come from the community to come and, and see, uh, Jim and into, uh, wish him well in his retirement. That has been, uh, had been moved to February 1st, just due to the weather and the impending weather. They want to make sure that people are safe. So again, if you were planning on doing that, uh, just make sure you, uh, change your calendars. Uh, but they are very much welcoming anyone within the community, uh, to come out and wish Jim well. As we mentioned, it is going to be cold over the next few days. We are watching the weather intently. Uh, please, uh, keep an eye out on our social media pages, uh, our Parks and Rec page, as well as our Town of Mills River page. If there's any information that's pertinent for the community that we can share, uh, we absolutely will. As you know, we've already been in contact with the DOT, with Henderson County, et cetera, to make sure that they are prepared for what's going to be coming in Mills River. But again, in these types of events, we just want to, you know, recommend if you don't have to go out, don't go out. If you're, uh, make sure you're in a safe location and, uh, they will, you know, the roads and, and everything else will be taken care of as fast as humanly possible. The, with that being said though, there's, we're in the freeze thaw period. So, uh, one of the updates I was asked to share is that because of the freeze thaw, the roads can sometimes start to crumble and potholes start to happen. And so, um, you can contact the NCDOT immediately. The faster you see an issue that may need to be repaired, put that into the system. We highly recommend you go ahead and do that as well. We know it's going to be coming. For the, uh, Parks and Recreation update, I'll just mention that the playground, uh, is continuing to be, uh, uh, the accessible playground is continuing to be worked on, as you can see outside the, um, right now, even though it's cold and we had, know that some weather's coming in, we still are thinking that we're going to be on track to open in March. Uh, and that, uh, right now, the playground itself, uh, is accessible, that part of it. But we, uh, as a reminder, there may be times that that's going to be taken, you know, and blocked off just because of the work that's being there. So please keep an eye on social media accounts to see, uh, what the, what it looks like. As those close down, we are going to be posting to let people know what to expect in the, uh, in the town. And then last but certainly not least, we are, uh, as you, many of you may have noticed, the back path is open. Right now, we are still working on clearing out the storm debris in there and now, and over the next, uh, we're working through the contracting part, part of that right now. But the back, uh, area is open and available for you all to use, but please adhere to the signage, the, the, to stay out of areas that are blocked off. And that's for your safety, uh, as much as anything else, just because we are going to continue working to clean that area up. I think, uh, those are all the updates I have, uh, for the town.
Okay. We're moving on to, uh, public comment. We got anybody signed up for public comment? We'll start out with these and if we got any more, I will be glad to hear you. Okay, Jenny Sealy.
Hey y'all, my name is Jenny Sealy, uh, Clarice Trail. I just wanted to come up and thank y'all for appointing me to the planning board. I hope to represent well and, um, work with other people on the board to get this town moving in a direction that we can all um, enjoy and appreciate. So thank you.
Hey, I will say that I watched that planning board meeting and I think that's just quietest I've ever heard Jenny Sealy.
Yeah, I just.
With all due respect.
A little bit of time. Just give me a little bit of time.
I know, I know.
Cause being, uh, being, be, uh, being sidelined between Brian and, and, uh, Mike talking, I have to like edge myself in. So yeah, just.
Go get your.
Yeah, exactly.
Wedge you can drive in there before long.
Exactly. So thank you all. I do appreciate it and I hope to do you proud.
Thank you so much. Uh, Brian Ross, you're next up, buddy.
Clear than that. Brian Ross, 16th Schoolhouse Road. Uh, you have an opening on the Board of Adjustments. I spoke with Ms. Brown about how that works. Uh, just want to make sure you guys know that I am open to moving from an alternate, which I currently am. Uh, but Ms. Brown, let me know. That's not, um, just a new applicants or, um, the alternates. It's from anywhere.
Okay.
So if you guys feel, you know, the, the, the need to move me in that, that's fine. If not, that's, that's fine too. I know.
Okay.
Just want to make that known.
Thank you, Brian. All right, anyone else for public comment? Hear none? We'll move on. All right, approval of our consent, uh, consent agenda by motion, please. Thank you, Brian. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sandra. Any discussion on this consent agenda? Hear none? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none? All right, rolling right along. Our presentation on our record, Jen, our presentation from our retiring tax collector.
Yes, and as a, as, uh, as orally, uh, walks up here, I'll just mention that again, for the public's purpose, the, by its general statute, the, uh, tax collector must provide an update, uh, to council on, uh, the ta, uh, on the status of tax collection. So orally.
Kristen, pay attention. I'll need you next.
I've been told I'm, I'm the guinea pig. So here we are. You have a staff report in your packet, um, explaining why you didn't have a tax report in your packet. Um, and for the general public, I just want to say that, um, normally our reports go from, um, the first of the month to the, to the last day of the month. Except in North Carolina, with the date of delinquency being generally the fifth or sixth or seventh of January, sometimes the eighth. I didn't have time to actually get you a report. There was no point in doing a December 31st report. We do a date of delinquency report. Um, that was compiled on the eighth. Obviously I missed the sixth deadline for the packet. Um, and that's why you have this updated, uh, tax report showing collections through the end of December and the date of delinquency, uh, which was through the last day of the pay, which was January 6th this year. The other, you very well may get a revised report for, for this time period in February, because the other, um, wild card in, in the collection rate is that anything that's postmarked before January 7th is also considered on time. And because we had no mail today, yesterday we were getting mail dated, um, January 2nd. So I would think that this collection percentage would go up.
Understood.
And that's really, um, I just wanted to mention that back in the fall, Henderson County, um, gave us a list of properties that were completely destroyed or, or badly damaged or slightly damaged, uh, by Hurricane Helene. And, and I asked our, our planning department for a copy of that list. And I flagged the properties that were damaged or destroyed in our tax database. Um, and put a note on it that if they became delinquent, that maybe we should consider not doing any enforced collections on those properties. And today, just, just to see where we were at, I ran a report and of the 54 properties that I flagged as being destroyed or badly damaged, 47 of them have paid their taxes. Um, and I was, I was humbled and really, um, impressed by the way people in Mills River feel that they need to live up to this obligation. And, um, and I've always felt that way, you know?
Yeah.
The people here are amazing.
They are amazing.
This is my last tax report, uh, and my last town council meeting. Um, and I just want to say something very simple, because Patty will get mad if I make her cry. And, and that's that I've enjoyed this job a lot and I've enjoyed this town and I've enjoyed, um, being with this staff in whatever, in the many incarnations of, of town council and, and the staff people here.
And we've enjoyed you.
From the.
You and Sue, you know, I basically grew up with y'all. And so I'm glad to have you as long as I had you.
It's not just Patty crying.
Yeah, it won't be just Patty.
We're gonna miss you.
All right.
We're gonna miss you.
Can I ask you a question of before?
Sure.
So as these mortgages get sold, and how hard is it? Do they just automatically reach back out to you to figure out how to get you paid when they're escrowing these taxes from these individuals? I've just run into situations with insurance money on these tree heads where the insurance says, okay, here's the first check. You gotta, you, you gotta send it off to your mortgage company, get it back. But the homeowners are actually having a hard time finding who has their mortgage.
Hmm.
And I'm having to send them to the county or to the municipality that they're in to actually find out who owns their mortgage now.
Yeah.
To get a contact. And I'd have never dreamed of that, you know? So do they, is, is that always been, is it been any trouble for you guys? Or they just automatically know that they, they hunt y'all out?
Mortgage companies generally don't pay the taxes themselves. They contract with another company that manages their escrow accounts.
Gotcha.
Um, so we have probably three large companies that request bills. And what we do, we, we used to send them the bills, but what we do now is we just send them the whole file. And they pick who they're going to, who they're going to pay.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay. That helped me a little bit. Anybody else got anything for Arlie?
Thank you, Arlie, for all your hard work.
You're welcome, Senator.
Dedication to the town. You have done great things for us and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
You ain't gonna believe it, but Santa Claus has left something under my table.
No, no.
I want to let you get this thing out. Santa Claus actually let me see it the other day.
Oh, man.
Oh, it's heavy. I'm gonna hold the box. You wiggle it out. There's tied in that phone. There you go.
Oh, that's really sweet.
And you can only imagine who Santa Claus is.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's really nice. Yeah.
Thank God. Try to, I'll take them right off.
Can you actually see it?
It's some problems.
Yeah, just. Oh, you're welcome. I hate Santa Claus, by the way. So anything else for Arlie? Arlie, I'm gonna tell you like we tell a lot of them, you're free to leave tonight if you need to get home early. Or you can stay as long as you want to. Just don't make Patty cry.
Or anybody else.
Or anybody else.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody else caught that, but she said this is her last town council. And you guys said, you're more than welcome to come back anytime you'd like.
Exactly. Exactly. Okay, so moving on to B. I will tell you all that we're, we're going to have a closed session with economic. economic development. If they show up, we'll have to move to the back and y'all just hang tight and we'll be back just to get them freed up and out of here. But we're moving right along. B, discussion on parks, trails, and recreation vacancies.
Okay, you have a vacancy on this board and you have three active applications on file. If I'm not mistaken, I think Mr. Waller is in the audience.
Right. Discussion, nominations, appointments, however you want to do it.
If Mr. Waller's still, then I make a motion to approve Mr. Waller to that vacancy on the Parks, Trails, and Recreation Committee.
I've got a motion. Second? Second. Any discussion? Is anyone else here on this list? Sarah, Jack, Thielen, here or no? Alright, no more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here none? Welcome aboard. Alright. Alright, let's jump through this Board of Adjustment one right fast and then we'll get Brittany, okay?
Okay, we have a vacancy on the Board of Adjustment. You have two applications that are on file and you also have two alternate positions. You can either appoint from the applications on file to a term ending November 18, 2027, which was Mr. Moore's term. Whoever you appoint will be fulfilling that term. Or you can appoint from the alternate positions, move them up, and then we would need to fill one of those positions.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Jim Foster for the Board of Adjustments.
Okay, I've got a motion for Mr. Foster. I'm looking for a second on that one.
Oh, second.
Okay, I got a second. Now we're up for discussion.
So, that means then we have to get another work if we do a full-time Mr. Ross and Foster stay as alternates?
That's my understanding, yes. Yeah, because even the alternates have terms, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
It's separate. It's not automatic.
Correct.
Anything else? It does seem a little odd in ways, but it's been that way since the start.
So, if you decide to move Mr. Foster up, his term ends November 18, 2027 also. So, he would be moving up into the vacant seat with a term ending November 18. Then we would need to fill the alternate position, which also has a term ending November 18, 2027.
We would bring that to you at a future meeting.
Or we could take care of it tonight if they're ready.
Yes.
Take care of it tonight.
Mr. Ross is here. I'm gonna vote no on either Mr. Ross and Mr. Foster just because I would like to see somebody different because they serve heavily on.
Playing the board.
A lot of other boards.
Okay.
I think.
So, but we're in discussion. Go ahead.
I agree with James on this. I think that, I like the idea of the planning board serving as alternates, but them not being in the position of being on the board full-time. So, if we have applications of people who are willing to serve full-time, then I think we should look at those first.
Okay.
Do you ever have to step up? No, I'm the second. I just want Jim to do one. So, Jim stepped up multiple times. I like. I've been to the full classes.
Okay. Anybody else?
Boy.
Makes sense.
So, I've got a first. I got a second. I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor of Mr. Foster?
Aye.
So, any for, no? No. Okay, so we're gonna do that. Alright, so as we're back to the drawing board. So, we could either make a motion for one of these on here, I'm assuming, or you could bring somebody else up that you know about, that you know is willing to serve.
So, I'm making a motion to approve Brad Burton.
Okay, got a motion for Brad Burton. Second on Brad Burton?
I'll second that. He's got planning experience.
Okay. Any more? Alright, so we got a first, second, any discussion?
Is Jacob here?
I don't see Brad either, though. Okay, so, first, any discussion?
All I got on these was what was on here. There's no history or anything.
Okay, any more discussion? Nope. On for a vote. All in favor of Brad Burton?
Aye.
Aye. Any no's? Here no no's. Okay, so he will be our... Now, does he automatically become our first alternate or does Brian Ross move to our first alternate? How does that work?
Okay, so you decided on Brad Burton. Okay, so the alternates would stay the same. Mr. Foster be your first alternate, Mr. Ross be your second alternate.
So, when Mr. Foster moves up, then that means Mr. Burton still will become?
No, Mr. Foster won't move up is the way I understood it.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Mr. Burton is going straight in.
Straight in, yes.
Okay, alright. Okay. And the staff will let him know? Thank you. Okay, got through that. So, Brittany, what we're planning on doing, if it's okay with you, we've got a conference room in the back. We're gonna recess this meeting for a little bit, get you took care of so you can get back home. Is that fine with you? Because we still got some more stuff to do.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Just a little point of order here. With the agenda as is, we would be moving to D. And I just want to, what you're requesting is that we go to the closed session now. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, we'll come back to D on our regular agenda when we return.
We just need a motion to make that adjustment to the agenda. Okay, just want to confirm.
I need a motion to recess, to go into a closed session pursuant to 143 138 dot 11.
Seven.
Sandra's got, made the motion. I need a second.
I'll second.
Alright, Brian, second. Any discussion on why we're doing this? Here none? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, folks, just bear with us.
We come back here, I need a motion to take us back out of closed session.
I make a motion to, I'm gonna say closed, closed session, but that sounds, I make a motion to the end.
Closing session, thank you.
And I'll second.
And just second, any discussion about us coming out, or none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're back in our regular session and our regular agenda, and we'll move on to D, the adoption of Resolution twenty five, twenty, twenty-five oh one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So before you is a draft resolution opposing specifically the provision within, then, then was SB three eighty-two, now is session law twenty twenty-four dash fifty-seven. And as a reminder for you yourselves, this draft resolution came before you by council request, the last council meeting. The, the draft resolution that's before you highlights potential areas that, of concern regarding to the impact of specifically what some have called the, the down zoning provision within, within that bill, within that law, directly applicable to the town of Mills River. The point of this resolution, again, from the drafting perspective, is to tell the Mills River story, to specifically try to highlight what and where Mills River may be impacted negatively based off of this, around this bill, and then coupled with that, as you know, coming forward in your business meeting is a presentation later on this evening, around next steps. Usually, the way I like to try to think about this is that if there is such a desire by council to move forward with, with resolutions, is to also then couple that with potential next steps and ways to move forward with both requests and also with actions within the town. So that's kind of the, the thought process behind why this is before you now. Again, this is draft form, it can be changed in any way, shape or form. It can be accepted, denied, it could be modified based off of council's desire, and, and that, I'm happy to answer any specific questions you all may have about it before moving forward.
Questions for staff, question amongst each other. We, we one hundred percent completely have the right to draft up a resolution such as this, and my motion adopt it, and meet a sign. One question I would have, Mr. Matt, is if we take and we draft this one up, this is our standalone one for the town of Mills River. Could we come in later as a joint effort with, say, Henderson County, or all of Western North Carolina, or so on and so forth, and tag on to theirs as well? Okay, I just want to clear, make sure of that.
Yes, and so, yes, sir, you, you may. So if, if there's such an action for, or joint requests in the future, in whatever shape or form, this council has the ability to make that decision as well.
Got you. Questions, discussions, I know you got it, I know you got something on your mind.
I'm for it. I mean, obviously, it's a, it was done without any input from any local avenues, so I think it's something that's, you know. The fact that it was backdated a hundred and eighty days tells you that it was done for a specific purpose, and it was targeted at someone, so everybody in the state gets to pay the penalty.
Yes, very much so. I was told today that, which this is the third different story I've heard, but I was told today that it come from the middle part of the state where farmers was losing their land to solar farms. I hadn't heard that one before, so, but I will spread that along, eventually we'll see what it actually was about. But me and Matt were discussing this this evening, and he's a hundred percent correct in saying that, you know, this thing affects almost every municipality and county in, in the whole state of North Carolina. So as you read that bill and the parts of it that affects you directly, it either affects you in a good way or a bad way, you know? So, you know, here, it seems to be pinning us down, and I don't like that, as is Mayor, as Mayor Mills River. I feel like North Carolina is get a, is done a little overreach, and I've tried to express that to our legislators, you know, that has the power to change it. You know, the story I'm getting right now from anybody listening to me is, is in law, it's, it is a law, we, we can't do a thing with it right now. We're gonna tweak on it, but, you know, weekend's gonna take a while. You know, I watched the planning board minute, minute, meeting, and I seen where they was discussing the possibility of possibly with being able to do it if the property owner signs and says it's okay to do. Well, I'm sitting there the whole time watching it, thinking to myself, well, that's just the individual spot zoning the whole town. So as I talk to these legislators today, they're like, probably not gonna happen. Even if they do sign, you would have to get a massive area or a whole subdivision or something to make that to where it ain't just. And it, and me and Matt talked about this today too, it would make a nightmare for Mr. Malachek to figure out. Imagine Kevin going out to try to see if this particular tract of land is in or out now, you know? And then when it sails, the other guy wanting to go back the other way, and it being, what do you call that, perpetuity, that be, yeah, I can't say perpetuity. And would that be the right thing to do with it either? I don't know. So I'd love to hear any other responses y'all have before we actually sign on to this.
If, if I may, I apologize for interrupting, but if it's good, sorry, Council, I'll just add another little caveat that I felt to mention previously. The, this, this action is also creating, we're still learning as we're going with this action, and so even just, obviously, this draft is before you today. But we were in conversations with, with North Carolina experts in, in, in land use, and, you know, one of the conversations was around floodplain regulation as an example. And that was also, the, the statement was essentially, we don't know what the impact is, but more than likely, there's going to be some impact from this about being able to regulate floodplains. And now, obviously, I, I bring that up as a part of the conversation as well for the business meeting later on this evening, as we talk about the NFIP and, and work around that. So the communities are still working through this, the experts in North Carolina are still working through this. But we are continuing to learn about it, and what, I just think that's also an avenue, or just another bit of information that we learned today that I think is helpful for this council when considering any type of actions moving forward.
Anybody, anything else?
Like, well, so we, we sign this, this gets sent to who?
Yes, so, again, that's with, with council direction on this, what, what I believe, again, what one recommendation would be whether or not you would like to send it to, to our representatives at the state legislature. My, my recommendation would be if we send it to the state legislature, the state legislators within our area, then that we also then couple that again with that next steps conversation that will be happening later on today, coupling that as a part of a further discussion with them.
And I will say this, and I haven't been able to talk to Mr. Moffett, but Ms. Balkum, when we first started getting in the discussion of this, she said that all the phone calls she's getting on Bill three eighty-two, that people seem to be happy with it because it's protecting their land rights. And I said, well, them's not the same people that's calling me. And then, you know, I've got different issues here. As the mayor of Mills River, I'm worried about this almost two hundred thousand dollars we're spending on this UD up. And where, you know, where we're gonna land with that, and how much of it's gonna be useful at the end of this deal, and how much of it's going to have to be rectified to fit this bill. And, you know, that gives me heartburn, that's a lot of money. But, you know, I think each and every individual needs to call their legislator and let them know how you really feel. I mean, I don't care if you feel good about it or bad about it, but they really need to know, because when it's all said and done, they're either gonna have to change it or not change it, and we're gonna have to figure out how to live with it. But it's gonna throw a big loop in how we're gonna do business in Mills River moving forward this spring and summer regardless. So we're just gonna have to calm our heels a little bit and work through this and let it play out at some point, the best I can tell. Because every angle we tried to go, I listened to the planning board, I tried to run those by the legislators that I could get a hold of, and not even from my district, outside my district. I'm saying, hey, if I was one of your municipalities, how would you feel about these questions? Ask away, they say, and you ask them, so you're not gonna be able to do that, or you're not gonna be able to do this. And that's hard to hear, you know, and when you tell them you feel like the state's now running this town, when it comes to density and some of the zoning things, they say, well, and I get it, I understand that. We did it for specific reasons, we, we realized we got a tweak on it, and that's pretty much the consensus I'm getting from all.
You heard from it, like, you lightly mentioned Henderson County or Western North Carolina, is anybody else, have you heard of working on this, and would it be not just Little Mills River, Ian Madden, throwing a temper tantrum? Would, do we get everybody to?
Hold it, man.
I'll be cautious in how I answer this question, so I will not speak specifically for any municipality, other municipality, nor any other elected officials. I will just say that in general speaking, that there are conversations, or I would not be surprised if there are conversations that'll be happening in the future regarding any type of reaction that those other municipalities in the county may have. So, again, I can't speak for specifics, but I'll, I'll generally say that to, to the comment that was made earlier is that the, this, this session law has wide, wide ranging feelers across every county and municipality in the state of North Carolina. The, one of the, there have been approximately, what I have currently in front of me, about four or five different resolutions that have been passed across the state. To your point, as of right now, there are no other resolutions within Henderson County that I am aware of. One other caveat to mention is that this passed on December eleventh, and so depending on when meetings have happened, depending on when future meetings are, whether or not those discussions are at certain places with, within those organizations, that there are just some caveats within that. But that's, that's not an answer, but that, that, that's a little bit of context that I can provide.
I've spoken to several people concerning this because there's a lot of issues that lie in that bill, and one of them that I was concerned about has already been stricken out of it. And the others I've talked to said there's power in going in with more municipalities to form a letter to send to Raleigh that would get greater attention than just one municipality sending out a letter and kind of putting yourself on line. But another question I have is, if you go through with this and you do start down zoning property, are you gonna downzone the value and the taxes that go with it?
You're asking the mayor, the council? I don't know, I would have to see the appraisal differences to see where it was doing at. You know, we, me in the building business, I see where it could affect somewhat, but then I also understand that it, it don't necessarily by making lot sizes bigger affect how much the land values actually worth.
Right.
You know, an acre might still be worth what it is. But very soon, once people realize you had that in effect, it might actually make the land values go back up. But if you're asking me about the tax rate on that, I think that would be a year to year decision based on how much it's taken this town to operate. Both us contracting with the sheriff's department and making sure our needs with the department are fulfilled. I think that would be a year to year that we would budget for.
But you don't feel like downzoning will affect the value of the property?
I, I do not, me personally, I do not. If you're asking me personally, I'll say no. I say, I say it has factors where it could, but I have to see in ten years it would be way above.
How about residents' rights of their owning and operating their own property within reason as they see fit?
I under, I understand that too, you know, I grew up here, I understand that. But I'll also say in saying that, that I've also got to look after some of the ones that already live here, me, you included. We're hearing, we seem to be hearing the most from our taxpayers we have now. And we left that rural residential meeting, at least I did, confused on where everybody was. I'm gonna be honest, I mean, you'd have the same person come up here and be totally against it, but then I would hear other people get up and comments on things that was totally against it, and them same people would be clapping like exactly that's what they want. So I, and I'm just saying what I seen, and what I, and I was confused when I left, do they want it, do they not want it? That's why I was okay with it getting put off and revisited. And even if that bill, or that motion would have passed by motion that night, it would all be null and void because they backed it up a hundred and eighty days. And that's another question I got, did the conditional zoning, it was in place more than a hundred and twenty, a hundred and eighty days? It was close, I'm sure, but that's something we need to check on.
From, from our assessment, there was no action that was taken within the hundred and eighty days that would be, that would have to be struck. that would be, that would have to be struck, astricken.
All right, that's, thank you, sir.
So, and you mean by conditional zoning, the ability to conditionally zone property?
Yes, sure. Yeah, because that would be another.
And that's voluntary also. So, that would, I don't think that would apply.
They have to sign for that.
So, I'm for this. I'm also for the property rights and protecting people that they're able to use their property reasonably. I think it's a decision we should make as the town of Mills River, and that with the advice of our taxpayers, of our citizens, and guidance and recommendations of the planning board. And then, we make it as a decision, is this what the people want? Is this what the people don't want? And I think that power should be here because we're here. We, as a town councilor, here every two, pretty much every two weeks. And it's not practical to ask our state representatives to have a quorum of state representatives here every two weeks. So, they don't necessarily hear what Mills River wants, we do. So, I understand we're a state where the state government tells us what we can do, as in taxes, et cetera, and some things that we might like to do, but we need to go through them to get permission. In this case, I, I think that we're good to oppose. I also agree that there's strength in numbers. And maybe, whereas tonight, it may be just us, maybe in a couple of weeks, we might have a chance to talk to other municipalities here in the county and around us and get their input. I can't speak for Asheville, but my experience working there for six years, I guarantee they're against it, even if they have nothing that they can downzone. Whether or not we want to be on that same team or not, we talk about. But, you know, they are a big local municipality. I'm sure Hendersonville will have some comments in the county. So, I'm for this, whether or not I'm for it tonight. Maybe we ought to wait a couple of weeks and see what other input we get. I think it's a great job.
It's very well, very well, really.
Yep. But do we want to maybe get some strength in numbers and then, and do it? Makes sense.
We allowed to ask about it or pass this around without passing it?
It's public knowledge, I think, it's edited out here.
Yeah, it's public record.
Yes, it's public record.
Yeah, you could direct them to the agenda. You know, and Mills River has another key thing we have to think about is water quality and the watershed here. You know, not only are we protecting our own water, but we're protecting water now for the city of Asheville and residents of Hendersonville. So, we always have to, as a council, keep that in our mind, too, that we need to keep a good lookout for that situation, both with the floodplain and with the density, you know, which is somewhat controlled with the four different stages of the watershed. But, you know, it could easily get out of hand. It's not as, it's not as hard for some reason now, and even before Mr. Malcheck took it over to get a watershed permit as it once was in the building business. Used to, you dreaded going to get your watershed permit, but you knew you could get your building permit in a day, but it might take you a week or two to get a watershed from there. So, something's changing along that line over the last 25 years. So, that being said, I'd entertain more discussion or I'd entertain a motion to approve or deny this going forward.
One more question before.
Absolutely.
Is it possible to move this to right after the presentation on this? And then, I can make a clear decision? Are we allowed to pull off the regular agenda and put it on the business agenda?
So, yes, yes, sir. You may move it there now. Again, as a, as a descriptor of the business meeting, it is designed for a presentation and for future, for future agenda. So, it's one potential option that you may have. Now, again, you do have full authority under the business meeting if you so choose to, to take some action. But I'm just saying, based off the rules of procedure, or rules of procedure from the last meeting, that the business meeting is designed specifically for that. The one recommendation, if your council is open to it, is that you may move it down there, that point, to have it as a part of that discussion about potential next steps, and that being a part of that potential next step discussion. Or you can move to table this as well to a future agenda, such as the January 23rd or whatever you all feel comfortable with, you know, as two potential options for you. It depends on if you would like to continue this discussion on this specific item. You may move that down to the, to the business meeting.
So, as the mayor, I would say if we're wanting to hear the business portion of this later on, we just go ahead and table this to the 23rd, the meeting on the 23rd and make a decision then. That'll also give us, as council, a chance to reach out to some other municipalities and see where they're at with it. That's a hard reach right here at the holidays, but now everything's getting rolling again. So, we probably could do that. And I see, after talking to legislators, you know, I don't even know if they, with what they've got on their agenda, that they're even going to look at anything in 382 anytime quick. I'm getting told March, April, they'll dig back into it. That's what they're thinking. So, I don't think making a big move on this tonight is going to affect their decision-making on how fast and hard they need to get to it at all. I will say that with Bill 382 in place, that should give us time to figure out a way, to figure out where the consensus is with our 7,500, 8,000 people in Mills River as to where they want this rural residential. And like I say, we'll do whatever they, the mass, the majority wants to do, but we just need clear vision on what that is. I don't want to make nobody mad. I don't have to make mad, but I want to keep as many happy as I can. That's just the way it is. And it's my understanding, we did reach out to the.
Other league of municipalities.
Yeah, but we did reach out to the Henderson County Election Board and putting that on a ballot, a referendum would not be a possibility.
Yes, it is our understanding that we do not have the authority for such an action.
I think everybody needs to know that we tried that route to see if we could get it put on, and that's not going to work. That's what you elect us to look after you for, and that's why we need to hear from you guys. I want to know, and I know where a bunch of you's at, but y'all was with us at that meeting. I think a bunch of us left there confused as to, and I don't know what everybody understands the whole situation. I think we got to get more education out there and make sure that they understand that if you've got this garage there, we're not going to take your garage away from you. You know, it might limit how much you could add on to it later, but we're not taking, we're not making you shut down anything. We just need to get more information out there to them.
The only thing I'll say to that is, I think it was clear during the election what Jeff and I's position was about that. And there were candidates who are pro-development, pro-commercial. And if you look at the ends of the spectrum, the way we were positioned was at the top, and the way that other people positioned were the very bottom. So, I think that tells you what, that tells you everything you know about what the community in those areas is.
I think that's a fair statement.
There is a lot of good in here, and there's a lot more to be learned. I mean, with the flood we've been through, the property damage, the effect on people's lives. I think looking at it after the business meeting tonight will add more insight. And we still need to reach out and talk to people and get their inputs. So, they need to know what's going on in the meat. And, you know, ultimately, they need to be the ones to tell us.
So, if there's no more discussion on this, so we can move on, would somebody make a motion to table this or approve it or deny it?
I'll make a motion to table it.
Sanders for table it, second.
Second, if this, the next, next week, two weeks?
Table it to the meeting on the 23rd?
Yep.
Okay, so you're second in that. Any more discussion on it? Hear none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hear none? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may briefly, because this item has been tabled, as council member Goode just mentioned, we're continuing to learn more and more about the potential ramifications. But council will be open to us amending this resolution over the next couple of weeks as more information comes out, and then present it to you as a resolution as amended at January 23rd meeting.
Yes, and I'll even go a little further than that. I would like to see our staff, particularly you, reach out to Mr. Moffett and Ms. Balkum, and then have them come and sit in front of us here and explain their, where they're at with this. You mean, how they, how, you know, there might be some insight into that that we don't understand. You know, but it's hard to get all that from a phone call when they're in a hurry to go talk to somebody else. You know, they're getting their phones worn out just like everybody else. But if they're here and we got their attention, they got our attention, I think we could learn. And they would leave here understanding that it's a big concern to us as well. But see if that's a possibility. I know restraints on their time is somewhat limited, but.
And understood, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to check with the rest of the council as well. If we've worked towards that on January 23rd, that is the will of the council? Okay. Thank you all.
All right, so we got through that. We're bound to other business. Is that where we're going to this other page and going to the floodplain? Is that correct?
So, I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I did not mean to speak over you there.
No, no, I'm just trying to figure out our new layout.
Sure, absolutely, yes. So, what my recommendation is that, as mayor, if you call for any other business, if there's no other business, then the, then there would need to be a motion to adjourn that meeting. Then, council may choose, if they so wish, to take a break or to move directly into the business meeting where you vote to open that business meeting and move forward.
Okay. So, any other business that would need action on? Hear none? Nope. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our regular agenda portion of that. I think I'm saying it right.
I'm not going to have since we return our business meeting.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
To adjourn from the council, make them to go into the business meeting.
All right. So, go to first, I'll go to second?
I'll say.
Say the second. Any discussion of what we're doing? Hear none? All in favor? Aye. All right, any opposed? Hear none? Five-minute break, we'll be right back. All right, and opposed, here none, five minute break, we'll be right back. Okay, we're live. Moving on, a call back to order, do we need that since we're starting this new one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I need a motion to bring us into our business meeting portion of tonight's agenda. Jeff made the motion, second.
I'll say.
Sandra second. Any discussion on what we're doing here? Here none, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Here none. All right, business meeting agenda, we're starting out with the floodplain.
Yes, sir, so as Mr. Malachek gets set up at the podium here, I'll just briefly mention, so as a reminder, the business meeting portion is to help have those discussions about potential agenda items for the future. And one of those items that we've heard, obviously, since the storm is around NFIP or the National Flood Insurance Program. And so there is a certain time limit with, when it comes to some of these decisions around when potential NFIP and actions are taken by councils that may be beneficial to a community. So we wanted to make sure that we got this onto your agenda for preliminary discussion today. Get some action, some potential, some potential direction from council on how to proceed moving forward. And so Mr. Malachek is here, but we also have Mr. Steve Garrett, who is the state NFIP coordinator with us. And then in the room with us, Mr. Terry Fox as well. And so I'll turn it over to Mr. Malachek to continue introductions and then we'll go with the presentation.
Yeah, so tonight we just wanted to give an overview of floodplain ordinances in the National Flood Insurance Program. I'll start the presentation with kind of a general overview. We'll turn it over to Steve Garrett, the NFIP coordinator for the state of North Carolina, to go into the specifics of Mills River's status as a non-participating or sanctioned community. And then I'll kind of end the presentation with some Mills River specifics, agriculture, potential next steps. So we hear it all the time, but what are floodplains? So the floodplains consist of both the floodway, well, the river or water body itself, the floodway, which is where the river regularly overflows. We have the 100-year floodplain and then out to the 500-year floodplain. So all of those areas are considered floodplains that would be affected by joining the National Flood Insurance Program. I thought this was interesting, I'd never done the math before. The map on the left is a little light, but you can see all of our different floodplain areas in the town. Comes out to about 3.35 square miles, that's approximate, but about 15% of our jurisdiction, jurisdictional land area is in floodplains. And you can see the breakouts there for the different ones. Obviously, the Mills River floodplain being the largest, followed by Boylston Creek. And then we have French Broad and McDowell Creek after that. So with Hurricane Helene, what were the impacts to Mills River in these floodplains? We did find out we have about 87 structures in floodplains in town limits. Thirteen of these structures or property owners applied for individual assistance after the hurricane. And four of those structures were located in the floodway itself. So not just the floodplain, but the area where the river regularly overflows. Compare that to the total number of individual assistance applications that FEMA received from town residents and property owners, that was about 316. So out of those, 13 of those were in floodway areas. So again, the importance in consideration of the timeline, if council wants to move forward with consideration of adopting a floodplain ordinance and joining the program, is that if we join within six months of the federally declared disaster, all of the additional assistance that would not otherwise be available to folks in floodways or floodplains would be retroactively applied or would be made available to them due to Hurricane Helene. So in, in order to meet that deadline, we would have to join the program by March 28. These specific assistances that are available is, you can see here, permanent work for public assistance projects. Again, that would be involved with town of Mills River. If we had a structure in the back of the park that got damaged. Individual assistance, which is what was on the previous slide. Hazard mitigation grants and projects, which the town could participate in. And then obviously state assistance for flood damage. But this is just, I'm just throwing this out there at the front end and we'll talk a little more at the back end. But this is a potential timeline if we wanted to join the program by that deadline. So that the full amount of assistance could be available to all those individuals, specifically the ones in floodplain areas or that experienced flooding from Helene. So we, we do have time for continued council discussion of this. We would have time for two planning board meetings for consideration. But after that, we would have to move relatively quickly to adopt it. And if we moved with this schedule, the public hearing would basically be the day before the deadline to meet, to get the Helene coverage for assistance. Real quick overview, and then I'm going to turn it over to Steve Garrett. So what is the NFIP or the National Flood Insurance Program? So it's managed by FEMA and basically it allows the deliverance of flood coverage through a bunch of different, a big insurance pool. And also they have some direct insurance that FEMA offers through the NFIP program as well. Most regular insurance doesn't cover flood damage. But basically the NFIP and by adopting a floodplain ordinance with specific standards for development in the floodplain, you mitigate some of that risk for the insurers to be able to offer that coverage. So again, that insurance only becomes available because you adopt a floodplain ordinance with standards that may require elevation, may require floodproofing, because that limits the amount of risk and also potential damage, not just to structures that may be in those floodplain areas, but if those structures are carried away in floodwaters, also potential impacts downstream. There is no requirement that if you join, you have to have flood insurance, that is not required, unless you've received flood disaster assistance or been part of a hazard mitigation project. If you do have a federally backed mortgage, or if you get a floodplain permit, you know, changing your structure in a floodplain, then you may be required to get flood insurance. But if we joined the program, it wouldn't be like everyone in those areas has, has to get coverage. That's, that's not part of it. So Mills River not is a non-participant in the NFIP. It's also called sanctioned, we're a sanctioned community because we don't participate in the program. So North Carolina has 634 communities that are part of the NFIP. And this data is a couple of years old, but we're one of 27, I think as of 2021, that did not part, do not participate in the program. And from here on out, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Garrett to go through the next couple of slides and give a more in-depth overview of the NFIP. And then Steve, let me unmute you and I'm going to kind of pull you over here. So you can see the screen and talk to everyone. And Steve, just let me know when you want the next slide and I'll advance that for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, I do appreciate y'all accommodating me to be there with you on Zoom. And I appreciate Terry, our Western planner, being there in person with you. You can go to the next slide. So first off, just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page. Participation in the National Flood Insurance Program is voluntary. We're not here to coerce communities into joining or force them in any way to try to join the program. There are benefits to being in the program and there could be potential consequences for not being in the program. But again, it's, it's up to the local jurisdiction to make the best decision for their community. Because we have identified flood hazard areas within the community. In fact, those were identified prior to the incorporation of town of Mills River and were part of unincorporated areas of Henderson County at the time. Certain financial, federal financial assistance is not available. That's why the community is considered sanctioned, because those flood hazard areas have been identified and the community has chosen not to participate. Next slide, please. In order to join the program, there's three items the community must submit to FEMA. And our staff can be there to assist you. First, you'll complete the application that FEMA has to join the program. The town council will need to adopt a resolution of intent to participate in the program and cooperate with FEMA. And then we'll also need to adopt a floodplain management ordinance or flood damage prevention ordinance. So our office does provide templates for the resolution of intent. And we also provide a model of state ordinance that communities can choose to adopt or modify to meet their needs. Given the, the previous discussion about the changes to 160D and down zoning, we have had some discussions with school of government. And right now their recommendation is that communities may want to maintain a standalone flood ordinance or, or remove it from any sort of zoning type of regulations. Just so it doesn't interfere with that, but there's still a lot of questions up in the air as we move forward with, with that particular law. So there is a little bit of conflict there as well. But generally, you know, community can choose to incorporate that into their UDO or have it as an appendices as well. And, you know, we'll work with your, with your staff to, to develop the best ordinance that meets the community's needs. It must have at least meet the NFIP minimum standards, but it can also exceed those standards. Next slide, please. Okay, so for the sanctions, for communities that don't participate and have flood hazard areas identified, property owners cannot purchase flood insurance policies anywhere within the community through the National Flood Insurance Program. And we'll talk about some other options that may be available to those folks if the community continues not to participate. Existing flood insurance policies, those that have potentially been under the Henderson County program until the community incorporated, when those came up for renewal at the end of that year or cycle, those folks were not able to renew, but that was way back in 2003. Federal grants or loans for development in those identified flood hazard areas under programs by other agencies such as Department of Housing and Urban Development, the EPA and Small Business Administration are also not available. Also, certain disaster assistance for flooding in those special flood hazard areas to repair insured private and public buildings are not available. Next slide, please. Also, another big one is the federal mortgage insurance or loan guarantees, especially those through the Federal Housing Administration and Department of Veterans Affairs are not provided in those special flood hazard areas. So folks that are applying for those Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac type loans or mortgages or getting a BA loan, those would not be available in the flood hazard areas. And then again, federally insured or regulated lending institutions, banks are not allowed to make conventional loans, or they are allowed to make conventional loans for insurable buildings and flood hazard areas in non-participating communities. However, they must notify the applicants that the properties are in the flood hazard area and not eligible for that federal disaster assistance. So again, some lenders may choose voluntarily to not provide those loans in those areas. It's up to them. Next slide, please. Getting a little bit more into the details on the federal financial assistance. Federal agencies are prohibited from approving any financial assistance for acquisition or construction purposes in areas of the special flood hazard within a community sanctioned under the National Flood Insurance Program. And for those acquisition construction purposes would include financial assistance for the acquisition, construction, reconstruction, repair or improvement of any publicly or privately owned building or mobile home and for any machinery, equipment, fixtures or furnishings contained or to be contained within those structures. The purchase of subsidized or subsidization of mortgages or mortgage loans, federal disaster assistance in connection with the Flood Act under Ronald P. Stafford, Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act. Next slide, please. This table provides a little bit more kind of a breakdown of those different types of eligible and not eligible for those areas in the flood hazard areas. So for the public assistance, that's assistance to the community itself. Emergency work categories A and B are always eligible. So that's debris removal and emergency protective measures, those are not held from the community. But anything related to permanent work, if it's in the special flood hazard area, would not be available. However, for other disasters or areas outside of the special flood hazard area, then that would be available to the community. Rental assistance for individual assistance and other needs are provided without restriction. Individual assistance for real and personal property. Again, if they're insurable and the structure's located in the special flood hazard area, then they are not eligible for assistance. And hazard mitigation grant programs are also restricted for those areas. Go to next slide, please. So again, just in a little bit more in depth for each one of these items. Again, any emergency work under public assistance program, there are no restrictions. So again, debris removal efforts and emergency protective measures under those sections of the Stafford Act are still available to communities that do not participate. However, permanent work for the repair, restoration or replacement of otherwise eligible facilities within the special flood hazard areas are not eligible for communities that do not participate. Go to the next slide, please.
And if I may, I'm just going to jump in here just for the purposes of, for the, for the public listening and also for the council. When he's talking about public assistance and individual assistance, as a reminder, public assistance is affecting specifically what the town of Mills River as an organization, when we are looking at our program through FEMA and how we are looking at reimbursable opportunities, that's public assistance. Individual assistance is, as the name entails, dealing with individuals who may have filed through FEMA and, and through that program. So just for that clarification.
Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you. And just to add on to that, we could use the, the town hall as an example. If the, the town hall was damaged by flood and was located in the special flood hazard area, it would not be eligible for repair work to be reimbursed through the public assistance program. But if it was located outside the special flood hazard area, it would be. So that's just an example for public assistance. Moving on to the individual assistance program for housing assistance, again, rental assistance to help lodging or direct housing are still eligible to individuals that have been impacted by the event. Grants to permanently repair or replace insurable real or personal property damaged by flood in those flood hazard areas would not be eligible. Next slide, please. Other needs assistance, this is for medical, dental, funeral costs, transportation and other expenses that are authorized under the Stafford Act. And again, FEMA will consider referrals from the Small Business Administration to meet those needs when the agency denies a loan for such expenses. Again, those are still eligible to people. What they're not eligible for is personal property losses that could have been insured through the National Flood Insurance Program. Again, those would also include content such as appliances, clothing and furniture. Move to the next slide, please. So again, in accordance with the Code of Federal Regulations, if a sanctioned community applies and joins the National Flood Insurance Program within six months of the federal disaster declaration, these limitations on those federal disaster assistance programs can be lifted under individual assistance. So that's something that Michael had already mentioned previously. So that's something that Michael had already mentioned previously. Next slide, please. In the event that we had a flood or other type of event. That did not qualify for a federal declaration. That the requirements for state emergency declared or declared disaster under state general statutes, the one sixty six A. After August of twenty two thousand and two. Community must be participating in the National Flood Insurance Program in order to receive public assistance for flood damages. And again, that's state funded assistance. Go to the next slide, please. Other things to consider as you're making decisions to join the program or not join. Just keep in mind that properties of participating community that are annexed by a non participating community. Would lose their eligibility and not be able to renew their policy when it came up for renewal. Active policies would still pay out if there was an event. So if the community, Town of Mills River, for example. Decides to annex a portion of unincorporated Henderson County. Henderson County currently participates and the Town of Mills River does not. And that, once that property becomes part of the town, then, you know, those sanctions would apply to those properties as well. Existing development inventory, communities would be required to also identify properties. Structures and other development currently located in the special flood hazard area. And we would look to work with you to make some adjustments to those as necessary. And also keep in mind that with the substantial damage or substantial improvement requirements. If those structures are improved by more than fifty percent of their current value. Then they would need to be brought into compliance with the current floodplain regulations. If the community decides to join, join in about those requirements. Next slide, please. This is my last one and we'll hand it back over to Michael, but do want to be transparent and say that there are other flood insurance options in the state of North Carolina. We do have a private flood insurance program that was developed by the North Carolina Rate Bureau. And approved by the Department of Insurance in February of two thousand and twenty. There is information on the Rate Bureau's website, some videos on the coverage overview and rating overview. As best we know from this. Press release, at least one firm has been selling this product in the state as of August of two thousand and twenty two. There may be others carriers that are now providing this product. And the difference between this and other private insurance that may be available for flood. This particular program or product is what's called an admitted product through the insurance realm. And it falls with under the protections of the North Carolina Department of Insurance. And provides some consumer assistance and protection if for some reason the company decides to not pay an eligible claim or something like that. Then the policyholder can work with the Department of Insurance to have that corrected. Other non admitted products do not have that same protection.
Thank you, Steve.
Should you move on to the next slide?
Yeah, I'll take over the next few and we'll keep you around for questions. Thanks, Steve. So traditionally, the town of Mills River has chosen not to join because. You know, there's been a fear that that could open the floodplains development. Obviously, a lot of our agricultural uses are in the lowlands and flood plains. Steve was kind enough to send us a document delving into some of the agricultural considerations if the town were to join. The main one is that agriculture would not be exempt. I know that with the town of Mills River and with our incorporation, agriculture has been exempt from zoning and basically everything in town codes. If we joined this program, that would not be possible. Floodplain permits would be required and we would rely on the adopted floodplain ordinance for that. For any substantial improvement or for any new structures in those floodplain areas, whether they're agricultural or otherwise. Now, because we would be in the program, flood insurance would be available for those structures and for those agricultural users as well. NFIP doesn't have specific requirements for ag structures, so basically they're regulated as non residential structures. But there are some options the town has in how we can proceed in terms of specific requirements for ag structures. And also the next option or the next bullet point is we can actually petition FEMA for a community wide exception for agriculture. But we have to get that approval from FEMA. And then again, keep in mind if we are trying to meet the six month deadline by March twenty eighth. I don't know how long that would draw out the process. There's also variances, just like there are for zoning rules. So the town could also grant flood variances for agricultural structures, floodplain permits on a case by case basis. That's one way we can consider agricultural uses in those areas. And then there's also different standards to apply. Not having a background in this, I don't know quite as much as this about dry flood proofing versus wet flood proofing. But there are different ways you can make the structure safe and resistant to floods. And some of those are less costly and and less involved. So there is the option to apply some of those to agricultural structures and not to, let's say, residential or a normal commercial structure. In a floodplain or a special flood hazard area. So I bring up the timeline again. Again, just food for thought, that if council wishes to move forward with this. There's basically two pathways. We can have a longer discussion and take some, put some time and thought into this. But if we want to basically have that individual assistance available to those affected property owners. I think it was thirteen or fourteen applications that were affected in the special flood hazard area. We would have to join this program by March twenty eighth of this year. Potential next steps, obviously, Steve covered the basic requirements. We'd have to fill out the application, council would have to have a resolution of intent. And then really the largest lift is going to be the flood ordinance itself. There is a model ordinance that the state puts out, I'm familiar with it. But this being a new topic for the town and one we've broached a few times before and there's been concerns about. It seems to me we'd want to spend some time delving into those specific regulatory provisions of that ordinance. So again, we can come back at the January twenty third meeting with more information, but for now, this is the end of the presentation. We do have Terry Fox here as well, who's the Western NFIP Planner under Steve Garrett. And then we still have Steve here for questions, so I would like to open it up to you all.
Questions?
I've got one, I mean, it's pretty obvious what the benefits are here, but. I've got my reasoning for why I think we've never participated, but we've got twenty seven that doesn't participate. What do they tell you the reasons why? What is the most popular reasons why the twenty seven don't participate?
Do you hear that, Steve?
I did, and you know, Terry can jump in too. There's a couple of reasons, some communities don't have the. Some of them have very limited flood hazard areas. It's areas that, you know, may not really be conducive to development. There's others that are very small communities and don't have adequate staff or. They don't have the funds to hire staff or assign those duties to. Any individual that works for the community or able to contract their services out. And for one reason or another, it just, you know, maybe not. Something that they're interested in or think that they're able to manage given their current financial and staffing situation. And Terry, you have anything else like that?
Yes, Steve, some of them, some of those communities don't necessarily have flooded, special flood hazard area. They've never been mapped because they don't have any. Other other ones are, as Steve said, a space as small as this room is the only S F H T they've had. And they don't want, they don't want the responsibility, whether it be staff or what have you, to become a member. And, you know, go forth with the permitting and so forth that comes with that.
Do we know if, has any new maps been drawn since the flood and implemented?
So Steve could help me answer this, but today, as we sit here, the maps that are currently adopted are the current maps. Now, there is discussion about redoing some stuff down the road, but today, and it takes time. The making of a flood map is not just something that we do today and we have maps tomorrow. FEMA, North Carolina is a cooperating technical state with FEMA. We do our LIDAR, our mapping processes, but it has to be approved by FEMA. Through the legislative, through the federal registry, through those processes, and it takes a long time. So I'll let Steve add to that, he's at the at the big house and knows more about what's going on with that piece of it since the storm.
Okay, yeah, so as Terry mentioned, we are cooperating technical state or cooperating technical partner with FEMA. So we have ownership of the flood maps here in the state. We have ongoing mapping projects that started prior to the. So the French Broad Basin, we started work on probably twenty twenty one, I believe, was some of the work that we've done. With collecting base map information, surveying as well as conducting the hydrologic analyses. Currently, our folks are, our contractors are working on the hydraulic analysis. And later this year, near the end of this year, we'll have new maps out for some areas. The French Broad River itself is based off some older studies that FEMA did. I think back to the eighties or nineties. So that particular analysis is old and the model that we choose is no longer really being used. Under by most of the engineering firms across the state. So we are trying to modernize that. Again, that won't reflect even changes from Halleen. This winter, however, late January or early February of this year, we do plan to fly LIDAR. And there's various funding sources and partners that we're working with. But they're going to fly forty counties for the western to almost half of the state. And that will take almost a year to process. It will be late again, twenty twenty five, before we receive the final deliverables from that collection for. The terrain features. We'll also use that data to make some decisions about. Or highlight areas that we probably need to re study based on changes to the channel morphology or alignment in some cases. And we're doing some visual checks on imagery now. There are some areas of the state where the stream channel, the river channel has moved outside of the flood hazard area. And those would be areas that we would need to address. Of course, we also have the challenge of whether or not the intent by the communities and other partners. But if the federal and state level plan to move the streams back to their previous location. You know, as they're, you know, repairing roads or replacing road structures. Or whether we're going to leave it where it is now in its natural condition following the storm. So there are some additional conversations that we'll have to have with local jurisdictions and the communities. And counties across the state or in the western part. To determine whether we need to re study those streams or which ones are higher priorities than others. Based on the changes from this impact from the event. So a lot of things will happen concurrently or also, you know, again, we'll release maps sort of pre having information. But more modern than we have now later this year, but also working towards making additional adjustments. To account for those changes from Halleen and, you know, whether or not, you know, with with the community's input on. What needs to be studied versus what does not and where they might be looking at. Doing future projects to relocate the string back to a different position.
Any more questions? Y'all got questions? I got a couple more, but I'll give y'all a chance, Steve.
Got some questions.
Who's next? Go ahead.
For the flood this year, was that considered the hundred year flood? Or the five hundred year flood?
Was it a five hundred year flood event, Steve?
Well, it depends on where, what location it is. It wasn't sort of uniform across western North Carolina areas west. National area. And state closer to the one hundred year event, it's like Greensville. It tended that what's currently mapped is very close to what they saw during the event. Other areas like in Asheville, Black Mountain, some other areas, the Swanella. They have actually seen a thousand year event, something that far exceeded the one hundred or five hundred year event. So it really kind of depends on the individual watersheds and communities in western North Carolina.
That's similar to what I heard is that Henderson County was a two hundred to five hundred year flood based on where you were and what water body. But near Asheville and those northern parts of western North Carolina, it was more a thousand year flood.
With floodplain ordinance. Would that restrict and protect the? The floodplain now and help stop and prevent backfilling?
Do you hear Steve's question about filling if we adopted the floodplain ordinance?
Okay, yeah, so under the minimum standards, development is allowed in the special flood hazard area. Outside of floodway or not approaching the area, if it's approached within the floodway. Additional engineering analysis must be conducted to, you're not going to change or increase the flood elevations. Or you have to get a conditional matter of mass revision. And the community has to something up on that and allowing it. The community could choose to prohibit it. Henderson County has a limitation on the amount of build to be placed in the special flood hazard area outside of the floodway. And if it goes beyond that twenty percent, then. A special bill for an extended and additional engineering analysis may be required. Other communities like Village of Flat Rock. Prohibit really any type of development in the special flood hazard area. And their community then allow any buildings or fuel material to be placed in the floodplain. They do have some exemptions for federally owned property, state owned property. Underground utilities and a few other things that they do allow, but generally speaking, they don't allow development at all. So it really comes down to what decision they want to allow or not allow. What we really want to focus on is if we do allow buildings, particularly in the flood hazard area. We require those to be elevated to try to protect those from future flood events. So we really want to try to minimize any damages to those structures as best we can. Of course, we can't always predict the magnitude of an event like Halleen. So anything beyond the, you know, sort of hundred, five hundred or, and once we get to the thousand year event, those types of catastrophic events, we might not be able to predict those. I'll give you another example, a little bit more local. The town of Fletcher has a three foot free board, so that the floor elevations have to be good to be above. They are base flood elevation or flood elevations for the hundred year. Unfortunately, during Halleen, they had a apartment complex that was that met that three foot free board requirement, but still had water in the first floor apartments. And that was, they took the wind out of the sails for the area in the town of, or in Fletcher. He was quite disappointed that they weren't able to protect that structure that, you know, they gave the event. Exceeded that one percent, you know, chance or hundred year event. So there's, you know, sometimes it's just a matter of, it's bad luck or we had a more extreme event. Exceeded what we were trying to protect against in our ordinance.
If I could add, do that just a minute, from a field standpoint. Notice every time Steve mentioned somebody that didn't allow field, there were some caveats or exceptions. In our opinion, you truly don't want to not allow any field at all. If you need to fix a road, you need to fix a utility, then that would prohibit that if you follow what your ordinance says. So you put a caveat in your ordinance, if that's what you choose to allow field in certain places based on what the need is. Like you said, there are some federal lands or properties or some state properties in some of those communities. Like you said, there are some federal lands or properties or some state properties in some of those communities he mentioned that the community itself really wouldn't have control over. So that's the, that's the caveat. If you start thinking about no fill or restricting fill, is to put down what, what you want the fill to be used for. I know, though he mentioned local communities, I know Iredell County and some of the other ones further out east of here in my jurisdiction have special provisions for what fill they do allow. So just keep that in the back of your mind and certainly we can work with Michael. If that's something that the council wishes to look at, we can work with him to make it more applicable to Mills River.
Can you say it? Go ahead.
You said for the disaster state funding, that state funding is based on the flood participation, flood insurance participation? So if you don't have flood insurance, then the state will not come in and help in a disaster? Did I understand that correct?
And it would be, instead of you having flooded insurance, it's the community participating in the program.
Okay, well, I know Mills River doesn't currently have the floodplain, but Henderson County, I believe, does, correct?
Henderson County is a participating community.
So that's how we were covered because we're in Henderson County.
No, no, you're separate. So you're not, you're currently today as a non-participating community are not eligible for anything that, that's not allowable, like the emergency protective measures and the other piece that Steve mentioned. It's the only thing you're allowable for. Once you become a participating community, then that individual hazard mitigation, small business administration, those are the types of loans and benefits become available not only to the community, that public assistance that you can use, but it also comes available to your citizens.
That's what I'm wanting to do is to, to understand for myself and help other people too. Got another question for the flood insurance, does it cover landslides?
There are, Steve, you have to help me out here, there are, there are.
It includes mud flows and does not include landslide. That's a different hazard, all together.
Like you bet.
It does cover, I guess I should have mentioned this before. Once the community participates in property in the community or structure and insurance, NFIP insurance, insurance buildings and their contents. Does not include anything on the other creatures on the land, like your landscaping or driveways or bridges, things like that, does not cover that under the insurance.
Let me ask another question, just so I get a clearer picture. So it don't cover landslides, which would be if you had a mountain and part of it broke off and went away, that's a landslide. But so far down here, when it's the mud flowing, would that be covered or is that still considered landslide?
It depends, I think if it's flowing like a river or a stream, then it is considered a flood. So one of our insurance partners that does the training through the Department of Insurance kind of described it as you have a sort of a landslide or landslide. You can think of it as a crumbling brown and a mud flow, which is covered as a flood. It's more like a chocolate milk or, you know, maybe a milkshake or something. So you have, the water is picking up material and it's moving along some sort of water force or like a water force, whereas the landslide is in an area where, whether it's saturated or something else happens and the actual, you know, ground moves off the, off the rock surface and slides down the slope.
Okay. And in looking at flooding, not as per se for the river getting out and coming, but as in drainage ditches and stuff, would this require better property maintenance for drainage ditches? I know we have a lot of clay soil here and the water don't really soak in, it runs off.
I was a fellow in the mitigation part of that.
Yeah, that's certainly a consideration. Typically, that's more of a stormwater management issue. But under the NFIP, we want to make sure that we're not directing through long-term structures. So that is a consideration of making sure that we're not causing any harm to the adjacent. But again, it's soil type and other things should be taken into consideration as part of the development review process as well.
And Steve, to expand on that, that may be a reason, you know, flood insurance may be beneficial for folks who don't even live in the special flood hazard area. Because there are other flood hazards that don't exist just near a river or water.
Just to, to add to that, a lot of people don't, are not required because as Steve mentioned in his presentation, you know, federally backed mortgage is, is the requirement to have flood insurance potentially for most citizens. But people who don't necessarily live or are required want that. So they have the ability to get the subsidized flood insurance. And, and as Steve mentioned, there has been some privatization, but you're going to pay for it. To our knowledge, in, in my time being here doing this for quite a number of years, there's not any better flood, flood insurance available to the citizen than the subsidized flood insurance. And reminding you, it does cover buildings and the contents piece. And that's what a lot of citizens don't understand. They think it, the one policy covers both, but you can insure your contents with it. So there's a reason, that, that's another reason that's a benefit to the community for being in the program is you do get that good quality flood insurance and it's based today on what your particular risks are at your particular location.
So to tie into that, as these flood maps change, you're going to have mortgage properties coming into floodplain, possibly some going out of floodplain is because reroute. So in the middle of a mortgage contract, can Fannie Mae, Fannie Mac require these people that's coming into a new floodplain or floodway to have to pick up flood insurance that's never had to have it before? That's, that's, or could the ones that's all of a sudden now out of the floodplain be able to drop their flood insurance that they had to have when they first signed on the mortgage? It's got to be a consideration. Have y'all got in, have y'all dealt with that?
If it's newly mapped into the flood hazard area where it was previously outside, there are some provisions under the flood insurance requirements that they, they can get what is called a due map policy and put on sort of a glide path to get them up to what we call the full risk rate. And then those that are removed in the flood hazard area could work with the lender to drop the policy. Again, the bank would have to make, say it's okay because the borrower is borrowing money from that lender and the lender has, you know, interest in that, in that particular property. Financially, they may require that they maintain that policy. That's really between the lender and the, and the borrower. However, under the federal rules or purchase requirements, they would not be required to have that flood insurance.
I've got one more question. If we did start participating with the flood insurance and Henderson County also having theirs, being a municipality, what would have been different? I mean, would they come set up the FEMA place here and in Hendersonville too? Or was it still going to be all out there and they sat a lot out to us?
Like the disaster assistance centers or whatever? Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, what, and Matt, feel free to help me on this. I'm probably not going to come out exactly right, but what we're talking about here is the availability of businesses, property owners, residents to be able to buy into the flood insurance, the national flood insurance program.
Okay.
You know, there's still, as I said, individual companies out there that would possibly do it. But this allows you to get into that fifty-plus base organization that covers them more broadly subsidized. So that's really what this is about in my.
Yes, he's, he's correct. One thing also, the Henderson County is a separate entity. You become a member of the national flood insurance program, then you, the town of Mills River, are a separate entity as well. What you do doesn't affect them and what they do doesn't affect you. You are your separate entity based on your adopted ordinance and you're agreeing to enforce that ordinance in return for the subsidized flood insurance and the other benefits that have been mentioned several times here.
Thank you.
And if it participates, go ahead. I, I apologize. And if I may, you all, please correct me if I'm wrong here, but as a, as a newer resident to the area, I was, another way of looking at this is I was offered private insurance for, for, private flood insurance as an option just because of where the house is located. There are certain structures, commercial, business, residential, that are in areas where a private insurer would not offer any type of coverage for that. But by the, by the community participating in this, it would essentially say that there would be an option. Now, again, the option could still be no, the answer could still be no, but it gives the resident or the business owner the opportunity to opt out of flood insurance, whereas as right now, by being a non-participating community, there's no, you know, there's no opportunity to opt in to flood insurance unless that private insurer wants to take that risk, which again, as currently, there are some locations that do not. It will not, to your point, council member Gude, the, as there was a slide earlier that talked about emergency work and permanent work, disaster, emergency disaster assistance, those types of situations are still going to be based off of the type of emergency, the type of response that's necessary, all those types of critical emergency response needs, which would not be affected by this. It, it would be more, this would allow, again, those, those private citizens, private commercial owners to, or business owners to be able to reap some type of insurance reimbursement or some other opportunities for their properties that they may not currently have.
So this is more on recovery?
Yes, but I, I would frame this as, as a recovery piece potentially to, you know, have, in case of those emerg, again, just like any other insurance program. You know, if you haven't, if you have home insurance and your home gets damaged, you may put in a policy similar to this situation, it'd be a flood insurance policy. And I don't, I don't want to oversimplify it, but am I correct to state that, state it that way?
So, yeah, and you have the ability, as Ben mentioned earlier, to talk about freeboard. So you have to build the base floor elevation, but if you build it up, so we have an old adage in floodplain management, build it up or build it outside. That's a pretty fair way of, the exception of HALEEN is a pretty fair way of being safe. However, if you elevate it up above what that base floor elevation is, then that's that more protection. And if you look at the flood ordinances, it talks about the objectives, the very first one's life safety. That's, that's the first objective in any, any of the flood ordinances across the state of North Carolina in our model, okay? So it does give you the ability, an option that you can get some reimbursement. It gives you the ability to opt in, to get that subsidized insurance. And over time, I've had a numerous, number of calls from Mills River residents, how can I get flood insurance? And unfortunately, up, up until we, you, you, the council, the town do something, is what your manager just said. If, if there's a private option, then that's their only option right now. You do give them the option if you choose to participate because you are agreeing to adopt that ordinance and let your planning director, i.e. floodplain administrator in that case, enforce that ordinance by whatever standard you put in there, as long as they meet the minimum criteria of the code of federal regulations.
So, you know, I've been on council for a while now, but we've, angle a lot to you is we've used this as a zoning tool in Mills River, we have. We see the need for these people to be able to get insurance though. And we kind of was thinking, you know, where's going to go with this and we may still do it. But we was going to simultaneously, potentially with new council on board, put together some text amendments or something to still be able to protect with, as bad as I hate to say it right now, downzoning it. We're going to get this insurance plan in place, but we're still going to restrict what you can do here and here and here and here. But now with Bill three eighty-two being passed and in law, and you guys working for the state, I need y'all to pass a word on it is making it a hard sell for me as Mills River to come on board with you guys when I can't regulate anything because it's wide open right now for me. Okay.
The flood ordinance comes from the code of federal regulations.
Okay.
The state statutory authorizations are the only thing within the state, except a couple of pieces that came out of the Flood Act of two thousand, Steve can correct me if I'm wrong. But, but the statutory authorizations, like when one sixty D passed, chapter seven, nine and eleven is primarily stated out in the statutory authorizations that gives you the town the authorization to operate. You're doing that based on that code of federal regulations in that ordinance, okay? That's the reason, and the first thing Michael said in his presentation, was the agriculture piece is not exempt. But to, to our knowledge, there are no exemptions in floodplain management. The, the biggest exemption that we have found, and I can relate this twenty-five miles down the road or less, is to a historic structure, the Bitmore Village, the old dairy down there. So a long time ago, we were having a similar to the city of Asheville. We're in the program, obviously. Historic structure is kind of up and above the floodplain management rules as long as it's done by the rules, okay? So the, the bottom line is you agree to adopt and enforce it. You can, and, and that ordinance has to meet the minimum criteria. And by the constitution clause in, in government, you, you can make a rule more stringent, but you can't make it any less stringent than what the regulations say. So as long as that ordinance meets those minimum criteria, a forty-four CFR, fifty-nine dot one to sixty-five and the change, primarily the definitions in fifty-nine and the sixty-point-three is the meat and potatoes of it. As long as you meet those, and we, that's why we give you a model to go by. You can change freeboard, you have to be at BFE, but it's only making it better for your citizen because when she goes to get flood insurance, those questions are going to get asked. What's the freeboard? Are you built, you built higher? Because that's, Steve mentioned Eric Ruffa down in Fletcher was kind of disappointed because he had a three-foot of freeboard and the first floor still got, but he also had five-hundred to a thousand-year storm. You know, and most of us have not seen, many of us weren't around nineteen sixteen, even me. And, you know, we could have another one tomorrow. And, and you got to remember, it's the one percent chance in any given year that we refer to the one-hundred-year floodplain or the one-hundred-year flood.
If, if, if I may, just, just to provide a little more context to that, is that there, from what I'm understanding, is that there are certain minimum requirements, again, to participate. Those are able to, because there, there are federal regulations around that, the, the town can, would have to move forward with those minimum standards. To your point, Mayor Gonsen, I don't want to speak for you, so please correct me if I'm wrong here. There are certain elements of zoning changes or, or ordinance updates, text amendment updates, et cetera, that may, that this council may also want to put on top of that to, to regulate those areas of the floodplain more than what the minimum standards are. And for that reason, my understanding from the school of government and from others is that that's where the gray, what, I wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily even call it gray area. That's where we're still trying to understand exactly to those points. So, so yes, there could be some to, to meet those standards, but if it's going to go further than that, we are going to continue to work through what the ramifications of one sixty, of, of the session law would look like.
And as, as Steve mentioned earlier, I would, I would personally recommend, because I see a lot of ordinances, is that you have a separate flood ordinance aside from any of your other zoning or whatever, which would potentially help alleviate that.
But we don't have a flood ordinance.
No, not yet.
So this would be new and that would be the workaround for three sixty-two.
Eighty-two, whatever it is, yesterday.
Because we're not downzoning anything, we're just creating something new. Because we're not downzoning anything, we're just creating something new.
Well, you could possibly create a whole new section of the county's codes, zoning codes.
Correct.
And even outside the land use of the code, which is where subsidized insurance is all known and stuff. It would be totally separate. That's probably the safest way.
And as Steve mentioned, and I've mentioned, it has to meet those minimum requirements. But when we send it to FEMA, especially a new community, myself and Steve, usually through me, I have to evaluate that ordinance and make a checklist that it meets all the things that the Code of Federal Regulations require where it's at. So it's much easier and simplified on everybody concerned if it's its own separate ordinance, including the definitions. Because if you put it throughout a UDO, sometimes it makes it, you've got to send me six or seven chapters and we've got to do a crosswalk as to where it meets all the requirements. But yes, to the manager's point, you could add more stringent text amendments to make your ordinance more stringent.
How big a hassle if we pushed this through to the March deadline on our UDO consultants? Because we're adding another piece of the puzzle here in a way, right?
They would have nothing to do with the piece of that.
But if we want, but if, but if we was able to get some text amendments, then it would. The additional part would, wouldn't it? Okay.
That would be something you could bring up in the steering committee and their expectations with y'all. And again, the UDO project still has another year to change. So there's a possibility the session law thing may get worked out. And again, it's capital two to go to the NFIP route. We could always adopt it in the code and it could be incorporated into the UDO at a later point if the state allows.
And you have the minimum requirements that we could look at it at the next.
So if Michael doesn't have a copy of the model ordinance, I can email him that tomorrow. It's like a 25-page document, single on the front side of a page. And then basically what it boils down to, so that every community doesn't have something different. The state many years ago put together the model that you add your demographics to, you look at what you want to change. There are some options. You obviously are not yet even a participating community. There are some CRS or Community Rating System requirements that are in there. At this point, you would choose to leave those out. There are some optional things that you can choose about the free board and some of those things that you, based on recommendation of staff, would make the decision on. And you being a builder would understand that stuff. So we will help get him a copy of the model ordinance and that application and a resolution of intent sample document, and he could fill that out. And then he gets that ordinance like he wants it or y'all want it to meet what you need. He gets it back to us, we review, it's final, and it would be ready to go to, we'll have it ready to go certainly by that March 27 deadline or before, unless your timeline, you know, has to be that way.
And again, clarified very, by being the.
Yes, yes.
Also have the ability to adopt the floodplain ordinance where there's no development.
Sure. You can do that.
Okay. I mean, that could be another starting point.
Okay. Steve, Steve may want to intervene, anything else to add to that?
Yeah, but the only thing else I would add is you certainly also reach out to some of your neighbors or review their ordinance as well, like Henderson County, Hendersonville, Fletcher, Black Rock, et cetera. And if it is in this county or outside, and just see what they've done locally as well and see what works best for you. So there's a lot of different things that you can work, you're taking to answer those questions and help, if anything, develop the ones that work best for it, if that's the direction you choose to go.
Toby Shop over in Henderson, Natalie Berry is still floating around here somewhere. Angie Lee over in Buncombe is absolutely a great contact. Eric Ruffa out in Fletcher, the young lady out in Waynesville, Olga Grooman is an excellent in what she does. He has a number, Michael has a number of constituents across the region here that certainly will, those people I named off will be glad to help him understand, help you staff understand. And I'm here, Steve's here. We still have two other counterparts of mine and an NFIP engineer in Raleigh that we can help you through with whatever that you need to get this thing rolling, if that's what you choose.
But the one thing I won't be able to do, that we've always been able to do before, just to make sure I understand correctly, is the agriculture. I will not be able to make agriculture exempt. They will have to get their permit and so on and so forth. That's okay. Just so I understand.
Now, that does not allow to lay any cards or fronts for any kind of construction.
Construction, yeah, construction side of it. Okay, okay.
I have one question.
Yeah.
If we participate, this is an old standing from a hesitation that I've heard. If we participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, do you have the ability to still? If I wanted to go seek private flood insurance, can I still go do that or I have to participate with you?
Seek private.
That's what I. Well, that's what, yeah, I understand. I'm just saying, I've heard it before where people have said, oh, well, then you have to go with. Okay.
I've never, I've never.
Yeah, it's not.
I do have a question. It's more to the mitigation type. If I heard it or understood it properly, if during an event like we saw, we see a hazard that's out there that could be fixed, if we participate, there's public money available for that. If we don't participate, then it don't have to be the town to do it or the individual would have to do it. For instance, a bend in the river that can be, or a bank that can be stabilized or something that be creating a flood hazard could be mitigated if we participate with assistance.
So Steve can jump in, but hazard mitigation funds are most often available as a disaster goes into recovery, which we're heading, we're in that phase now. And we haven't seen the hazard mitigation monies come off of this yet.
Not yet.
Not yet, but it will come. But those monies could be used for what you're talking about. Just understand that when they go away, then we wait till another disaster or another declaration to think, to do thing, or to get that money to do things with. Steve, do you have anything to add to that?
If I may actually to jump in here first, and again, I'm going to ask, be corrected if I go off script here, but I think examples are helpful. The way it was explained to me, for instance, is again, we're talking, let's just take a structure as within this. You know, if, by not, by participating in this, you would have normal potential funds that say, hey, you can, you know, your building and the contents are able to be insured, so therefore you have the ability to, you know, receive some of those fundings, some of that funds. However, or not however, on top of that, there are hazard mitigation funds. So for instance, if your building didn't have flood doors, and I can't, again, I'm not an expert in this at all, but essentially doors that say, hey, when the flood, you know, when waters are coming through, they're going to open up to help protect it. That's an extra cost. There's an outfit that's associated with that. That's where the hazard mitigation comes in that says, hey, we're going to cover that potential, those differences to make sure that we're mitigating future hazards because you're participating. That's, to me, that's the clearest example that I have seen.
Or if the channel changes or if there's some kind of a blockage that's there that could be removed to make it. Is that?
So another inexpensive fix to help reduce flood risk is elevating mechanicals and equipment utilities. That's probably the simplest, cheapest, raise up your meter base, raise up your HVAC and those kind of things. And an example, a quick example, a residential structure today, because you're not participating, there's no requirements for flood vents to be put in that house. But you put those flood vents in, it allows the water, they're on two different walls. It allows the water to go in and go out without mechanical intervention. Now withholding a five, six, seven, eight hundred, thousand-year storm, and on a daily basis, that does a pretty good job.
And I apologize. If I may, Councilmember Moore, you were talking about channeling and those kinds of elements. The one thing that I want to be clear about, and we, and I don't want to get too much in the weeds on this, but there are elements of emergency work around to what you just mentioned, you know, blockages and changes and stuff like that, which would be potentially under storm debris, under other type of emergency work type of categories. What we're mostly talking about in this case are structures and specifically, building structures is defined as, and I'm going to look at you all over here, is that basically having two adjoining walls that are associated with that.
But I can speak in behalf of Hendersonville Housing Authority. The mitigation part of that, they are looking at changing the topo of the ground around some of these with mitigation money when it comes available to make these structures more safe just in the fact that the water can flow a different direction away instead of pooling there. So it's still structurally related, but it's topo and a point two. So.
That's one of the advantages.
See, I just think this council, you know, we're going to have to get on the stick if we're going to do this. So I think we need to make sure we get this from him so we can look at it the next meeting. I think we need to have the two or three farmers we've got left in the town to come and make sure that they understand that if we go with this, that they're going to have to potentially start getting some permits on their structures and maybe culverts and bridges if they putting any across drainage ditches or whatever. And whatever other implementations that's in that farmer-wise, because we've always been here to protect those guys. And I just want to make sure they're on board, they understand us going into it and the reasoning for that.
Our two planning board meetings enough. We've got probably a quorum here. You know, would that be enough to look at this and be ready to recommend it one way or another? Would there need to be a meeting in between the two? I hate to ask you all to come an additional night, but you know, if you get, you look at it the first night and it's not close enough to know you can make the decision the next night, would you be willing to come in in the interim and say, okay, this is, we're going to do a special meeting and iron this stuff out so that on that second, the planning board meeting in March, in honest to goodness, it's ready to go.
Listen, I, you know, speaking for, as a member of the planning board, not just this issue, but other issues we've already been working on, we're ready to move forward because delay is not friendly to us. And so I would be ready to, this is really important. We didn't realize how important it was until September. But on this issue or any other issue, put it in front of us, we'll do the work. We'll get more people that benefit.
Yeah.
Okay.
The 382 thing is going to be the gray area, the worst, going to act like y'all will resolve that later, otherwise we can miss this time.
I got a question from Mike. If we did like a council subcommittee to help, would it help you in any way or hinder you? To help with, like, through the process, yes.
I don't think that would be necessary. I mean, I think we could come back since y'all meet every two weeks. I think, you know, if we needed to be, it could be a standing item where we just check in about it.
Okay.
I do have the model ordinance now, so again, it's kind of putting it before you, going through some of the major points and seeing how we want to tweak it for Mills River.
So one other question I've got is, once we draft this ordinance up, it's like any other ordinance. It can be changed as things evolve around this as years pass. Okay, okay.
So basically, as a cooperative technical state of FEMA, you would make your changes. And it was done, in fact, through Michael, who intended to be, and if I have questions, I'm going to my boss. But we would look at this and make sure it still ensures that it meets the federal regulations requirement.
Okay.
Then, we've always tried to say that you can put in your ordinance what you are willing to afford. You and your leading council here are really good at it, while it accepts the minimum requirement. Okay? So we'll do everything in our power to help you get it ready to go, get it back to you. If you have questions, y'all, y'all have a card. Your manager and your planning director have a card.
Okay.
I've got, can't get Steve, I've got pretty much direct access to him. We talk.
Okay.
We'll call at nine o'clock at night, but we talk at seven or eight sometimes and call the book. And I've been kind of active based for the store, working other side of the job. I do other things as well. But this is my primary job, you know, it's like a normal. We'll do our best to help you guys if this is what you want to do, get you up and running by your deadline.
So we pull the trigger on this, let's say. We get our ordinances in place. Everything's agreed upon now. Five councils down, 20 years from now, they elect to go change this somehow, tweak it, do whatever. What loopholes have they got to go through? Is it basically the same thing again? Okay.
We periodically update the model ordinance that Michael had, the 2021 version during the survey. We, our staff are in the process of updating that, but it's going to be sometime down the road.
Okay.
And then we would have that available, and if you choose, after you guys are gone, or the whole new majority here, and you decide, well, we want to do this, we want to do this. Again, as long as it meets that minimum requirement, and as long as you run it by us, then we would hold it up, do cleanup, and go fix that crosswalk and go from there.
Okay.
Same token to be here.
Perfect.
You're going to get it done about a day of that deadline, and I may have to pick it up. I may have to be here when we sign and seal that thing and pick it up and get it, get it going, okay? But we'll work through that process. Our regional core rep is out in Buncombe County, working out here now.
Okay.
We talk, Steve talks regularly, I talk, because I need to, we'll get questions from her on the different footsie.
Yeah, so I was just going to say, Harry's right. We do have our FEMA partners here in the Asheville area. But they're not too far down the road, you know, it also kind of provides support. We just want to, you know, from the state level company to talk to this evening. We could certainly bring our FEMA colleagues in if you want to discuss this with them directly. If the staff need additional assistance, they're able to as well.
I have a question. If we were to ask tonight to initiate the text amendment, would that be, you know, to give us, give you a little more time so we're not waiting two weeks and then saying, this? Would that be, would you appreciate that? If you knew, if we decided for you to move forward now, because that doesn't tire hands into passing the text amendment. It just gets the work started on it. It's two more weeks. Would that help?
It would be two more weeks of twice time, basically. We had built in the potential timeline that it would take two council meetings and two planning board meetings to get through. But if the council wants to, there's a majority of council that wants the direct staff to initiate a text amendment. We can start that immediately and then even try to get the planning board consented.
So it wouldn't tire hands to passing it. So if we still had enough concerns that we decide, no, maybe this isn't right for us at this time. All we've done is we've asked you to do work that we're not going to benefit from just yet. It may be later down the road. But, you know, rather than waiting two weeks to say, let's initiate the text amendment, counseling towards, let's ask you, ask you to do it, start it on it now, assuming that we have senses here.
If I may, just again, for purposes of this business, of the business meeting, looking at planning forward. Yes, Mr. Malachek is absolutely correct around the tentative timeline. The council can direct us to move quicker or slower, depending on what you also choose. If, one recommendation, if I may, is to say, if there is the will of council for us to start working on that, we can do so at the same time as continuing to keep this on as a business meeting item. Provide those up, regular updates to you all. And if at any point we need to, you know, hit the brakes or, you know, or go faster, whatever that direction is, we can do so. But yes, to that point, it will, it would speed up that, it would provide that flexibility. But again, only if council is wanting to go that path. But I also don't want to lose it off the agenda because I think as we go through this, there will be more questions, you know, that we need to work through.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, and it's more basic if it's a consensus of council, it's a staff, it's a gathering.
I just don't want you to be rushed at the last minute because there's always things that come up, you know, questions that come up, and you know, at the last minute, we're still trying to get something.
So if I may, what I would suggest then, if council again directs us to work for that, we would start working through the application. We would start working through the, uh, the application drafting, uh, getting into a draft format. As well as, uh, if council wants us to start moving on a potential draft ordinance alongside that. Then at the next, on the January twenty-third meeting, we can present perhaps the, uh, the application as an action item. To move forward on the ordinance as a part of the business meeting update for how we continue to move forward. We can, we can separate those out and continue both conversations.
Yeah. Okay, so by consensus, have staff move forward with drafting all this language up and working on applications and all. Not asking for emotion, I'm just asking for consensus to tell them to move forward with this. You good or no? Okay.
Uh, for it, yes.
For it, Brian?
You skipped James.
James. Yep.
If there ever was a slam dunk in doing anything in this town, this is a slam dunk.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
So.
Understood, we'll be good looking.
Okay. Appreciate y'all being here, as long as nobody got any other questions, we're gonna move us on forward, you good? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks for the entire, thanks for working with me, that's the only thing.
Thank you. And Terry, like you say, we may have to call on you for some late minute actions here to get this done, but if we go that way, okay? Alright, we're moving on to B, uh, 382.
Yes, sir, and uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, first and foremost, I wanna thank you all for working through this, I know it's about nine ten right now. I know that, you know, my, my expectations does not have agendas, agenda items these long, this long. But these are, you know, pressing matters that we wanted to make sure we brought to your attention as soon as possible, so we can get direction as soon as possible. Uh, I do think, based off of the conversation that we've had earlier, we've already covered some of the information specifically around the timeline. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Malacheck to potentially just move briefly through those slides, and then we can move through the, uh, the implication section.
Say every other word, you'll get done twice as fast.
And be twice as confused.
I'm waiting for Kevin to pull the presentation up. Okay, yeah, so we got our quick. A quick timeline, basically in November, there was a conference committee report, uh, that came out, uh, to both the House and the State Senate. Uh, conference committee reports are not able to be, um, but long story short, in mid-November, the House and Senate voted. Senate 382, Governor vetoed it on November twenty-sixth, and the Senate and House overrode that veto, effectively ratifying it, making it law. So you'll find me in the future referring it to the session law twenty twenty-four fifty-seven. Uh, this is the specific language, I kind of put some colors in to highlight what was struck and what was put in. Um, specifically, uh, you can see, uh, in the blue that, uh, it was expanded to initiate it. That enacted or enforced down zoning provisions. Um, and then basically, in the second red line down, that is where the local government's ability to downzone was struck out. And then the downzoning definition was expanded in the three blue lines at the bottom under three. Including the addition of, uh, non-conforming uses created by downzoning. So the new law states no downzoning initiated by a local government without property owner consent. Previously, we were allowed to do so, um, as was the case when we began the rural residential rezoning. Um, just covered this, non-conforming uses, lots, structures, improvements, or site elements were added to the definition of a downzoning. So that means if you do a text amendment to a zoning district, and uh, you create a non-conformity on a property. Whether it's even changing a setback, um, or a use that's not permitted anymore, that's now considered a downzoning. Uh, formerly, it was just decreasing development density or limiting the amount of permitted uses. Um, and then obviously, there was the backdating of this bill to June fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. I won't go through all the definitions, but um, there's some specific definitions in the slide I'd recommend you read through. Um, these were put together actually by our UDO consultant. One thing I'll highlight is these definitions don't exist in the new law. And so that was, is what's creating a lot of ambiguity, um, about how to interpret session law twenty-four fifty-seven. So before, uh, prior consent from affected landowners was, was required. Um, or is required before, uh, adopting these types of amendments. So reducing allowable uses, changing prior byright development to requiring a special use permit approval. And again, some of these things have evolved as we've learned more this week. I think, um, there was an example in the planning board meeting where we talked about changing the approval process. Well, we've now learned that if you change something that you were allowed to do just through a zoning permit to a special use permit. That may be considered a downzoning too. Reducing density, uh, increasing setbacks too. Technically, if you increase setbacks, you are taking land away that cannot be developed, effectively decreasing the development density. That's a, could be a downzoning as well. And then increasing development standards, uh, that can create new non-conformities. I think in the last meeting, we had, um, an example about possibly putting in some very strict architectural standards. That can potentially be possible, but it cannot be applied to existing development. Because if you apply it to existing development, those would all be non-conforming, it'd be a downzoning. It could only be applied to new developments being constructed. So what is, what consent is, what is consent not required for? So we can obviously do text amendments that keep the districts as they are or expand the uses. Um, we can do text amendments that maintain or reduce setbacks or, um, reduction of dimensional requirements. Um, reduce any development standards, uh, we can establish new unmapped zoning districts. Kinda like we did with the rural residential text amendment, it's in the zoning code, but it's not applied to any specific property. Um, we can, the, the one caveat of the bill is that it singles out residential districts. So in residential zoning districts, which is also difficult to interpret, because that's not defined in the law either. You can create non-conformities, so you can technically increase development standards in residential districts. Um, even on developed lots. Um, and if that creates a non-conformity, uh, you can also increase development standards on undeveloped lots or vacant land. Um, because technically, you're not creating a non-conformity there. But again, you gotta be careful not to decrease development density or limit uses, because then it becomes a downzoning too. Um, I'll go to the next slide. We've already reviewed all the, the zoning actions taken since June fourteenth. Um, and basically, nothing's affected except for the rural residential rezoning, which, you know, uh, no formal action was taken on. Um, there are other local governments who have, uh, I was on a, uh, webinar today with school government. Who have done new zoning districts, who have changed their zoning code and issued permits under new zoning that now doesn't exist anymore, or is, is illegal. Um, so there's a lot of, uh, ambiguity and uncertainty right now, but the direction from school government is this is law. And, uh, per this law, those old, those new zoning districts, if they fall within this timeframe, are void and unenforceable. So, um, uh, again, it's still to be determined what will come out of this, but the direction is, is that those are not applicable. So these are some recommendations, uh, we heard, uh, is to lean into the conditional zoning process. But through conditional zoning, you're creating a specific zoning district for that property with a specific site plan. And it requires written consent as part of the process. So conditional zoning itself would not trigger a downzoning, and obviously would usually be, um, initiated by the applicant or landowner. Um, if, if this stays in the state law in some form, we're gonna have to really look hard at non-conformities. We can technically cha-change the definition of what a non-conformity in our code is. Because again, there's no non-conformity definition in the state law. Um, there's been recommendations from our UDO consultant that we may even need to create categories of non-conformities. A non-conformities post this new law, non-conformities before this new law, and even another category to try to track these. Um, and then obviously, uh, if we wanted to, having incentives in our code. To basically ask for, uh, some of those additional development requirements, we not, might not be able to mandate. So we talked about some of this already, potential next steps. Um, this is kinda what everyone's thinking through right now across the state is seeking a local bill exempting the town. Um, or a number of bodies from the session law. Um, we're gonna begin preparing zoning consent forms. I'm even thinking of having the rezoning at the next council meeting have one signed, just so we're, we're protected and they're protected. Um, and then again, uh, depending upon how far down the road we get, this cataloging non-conformities in the town, um, which would be a daunting task. But since we're a newer town, there are quite a few of them, um, just to make sure, um, we're not creating new non-conformities that would trigger this law. Um, and that's really it, I mean, this, this is evolving, uh, I'll say on the webinar with the school of government, with their land use attorneys today. That, uh, they could only answer maybe fifteen percent of the questions, because they, we just don't know the answers to a lot of these things right now. Um, we did, uh, talk to the town attorney as well, um, and, and she's kind of up the same stance. Um, the one thing I think that I put in the staff report too, is we also don't wanna be a test case for this, you know, challenging it in court or through litigation. So that's all I have.
Questions? About to have some.
Uh, if, if I may, I would just also add, the, the examples that, uh, Mr. Malacheck just brought before you. Also, I mean, there, there's are time, resource intensive projects, even as they are. So, and these are, these are projects, or these are initiatives that we think are in many ways necessary, especially when it comes to creating the consent forms. Working through that, however, again, there's just, we, we also just have to recognize as an organization, the impact that this, uh, session law has. On, on planning and zoning, uh, experts and, and, you know, within the organization, so.
I can't emphasize enough, but all the residents of Mills River, either for or against this bill, needs to reach out to their legislators. Personally, talk to them, tell them where you're at with it. I mean, that's the only way that down the road, we could even have a local bill that even have a possibility of, of it getting introduced. Much less passive, because we're gonna have to have somebody carry it down there for us. And they're gonna have to either be on our side or against our side and get a laugh out of it. But the only way they're gonna know is you're gonna have to call them up, email them, do something. They're sometimes easy to get ahold of, sometimes they're hard, depending on if they're in session or not, but they should be reading their emails. But I can't emphasize enough, if we don't do this, for the most part, a lot of our town. Moving forward is gonna be dictated by a state law. Yeah, a few problems.
So, I don't know if the charter says this, we talked about the charter document the other day, but as elected officials, residents only elected. And the majority of the people against this that spoke at our public hearing, property owners, they're not residents. I wonder if y'all are keeping track of that, there's a pretty pissed off people here that own property. I've gone to the G I S and looked at every single, double, et cetera, property, such as to a barely forty-two percent of them. Sandra got your ass handed to you, people who aren't even the residents, who didn't vote for you, keep voting.
And I called some of them out at the meeting.
I just wonder if everyone keeping that quiet, because these two, one, their elections, because we vote. Those people that were angry vote, they don't have no vote. I'm sure mine everyone, represent us, we vote. Some foreign nationalists get on that cross. Maybe they're about, looking over there, they're a horseshoe race. They keep voting, caution everyone to remember, he votes.
Thanks, sir.
Right, curious, do you? But, uh, the question was, who do you feel you reference, did you give us equal weight?
I tried my best, sir.
Pretty crazy that, you give a property owner the same weight as a resident.
Mike, you said earlier that the possibility that you could ask for money for incentives, but you couldn't enforce it.
That'd be more like a development incentive, so if, if we're unable, uh, let me think of an example. If we're unable to limit uses, or it would be more of like a dimensional standard or setbacks. Or, um, let's say decreasing development density in a subdivision. What would the town's incentive be, and it wouldn't be financial, um, to garner that basically? You know, in conditional zoning, we've talked about the negotiating factor. Um, so, you know, how, how could you, how could the town get what it wanted in terms of some of these goals of limiting density? Um, enlarging lot sizes, um, and, and what could you get in exchange for that with a developer?
But if you, we have a farmland preservation program, I know that goes on to your deed. But because of this, if I was, if I came to you and I put my ten acres in it, and you gave me a hundred thousand dollars. And then I sold it to a developer. Could you enforce? That it's?
Specifically for far, uh, land preservation.
Is that because it, well, my answer to my own question, because that would be a deed related.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
It's a deed restriction.
Never mind.
Interesting times.
I, 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 I. Agree with Mr. Ross's passion. I also feel very strongly about not wasting tons of tax dollars being, uh, what'd you say? A, a tax money.
Well, hopefully, with staff and, and our lawyers, we can dodge that bullet moving forward. And what we're gonna see, I'm sure, is we're gonna see other municipalities try to manipulate the system. And either get it by or get their wings clipped, and we'll have to learn from those as well, just like everybody else does. I don't know how many of y'all watched the planning board meeting, but, uh, there was, uh, at the end, there was some. A possibility that they had ten meetings approximately a year, and they would like to see, uh, council members. Two at a time or whatever, uh, be at at least two of those a year. But I would entertain the idea, could we possibly. Host all the planning board meetings as. Uh, publicly having a, a possible council quorum there, is that a possibility? Just in case it happens. Because a lot of these items we're dealing with here, the more brain power we get with power, power in there. I think we're gonna be able to move mountains quicker and smarter and, and easier. And not having to wait two weeks, because we already know what the other side's thinking. So if it's possible to start advertising those as such, and for some reason, you know, Parks and Rec thinks they need us there. Or whoever, let's let us know and let's try to get the ball rolling a little quicker. You know, I know you're not, but you know, as we advance, as we, once we get the mulch going. We might need to have some joint meetings as we migrate across the hill.
But would it have to be, I, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned, because if it's advertised as a joint meeting. Do you have to have, then you have to go, if you're unexcused, then you're, you guys could vote.
No, 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 it's not a council meeting. It would just be, it would just be advertising to public that there's possibly a council quorum at this meeting.
Okay.
The only concern I would have, um, and this is the reason I didn't come Tuesday night. I would hate to tone down some of the candor that y'all can have, because sometimes you have discussions that are exciting and lively. No, Brian, I wasn't talking to you, I wasn't calling you, but seriously, I wouldn't want you to feel intimidated, because, you know, we're there. Just making sure.
And I'm sure, and I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of those meetings that we can all be there. And there's gonna be a lot of meetings that y'all probably say, hey, you know, this ain't one of them, you gotta be here, I mean, we got this. And, yeah.
When there's a big topic.
Yeah.
That would be one.
But if we're pre-advertising, and you know, Sandra ain't gotta watch, if she's able, she can be here, we know Sandra's watching, you know? We watch when we can, but it, it would just open up the opportunity, you wouldn't have to feel like you're inviting us. We know it's a possibility if we all show up, we ain't having to call. We ain't having to call and say, hey, you going to planning board meeting? If you're going, I'm not going, to keep the quorum situation out of it. So if we're just advertising upfront, then we just know it's free willy, come on.
One thing that used to exist, I don't know if anybody remembers this. When we were on the plan, when we were on the planning board, there was one person at council who was appointed.
To be there.
To be there.
As a liaison, basically.
Yes, as a liaison, whatever. Anyways, between council and the committee, and that Parks Committee had one, I mean, each committee had a representative from council who was in the added meetings.
Right.
And it seemed to work well, but for some reason that disappeared, so.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, if it's our, I, I would, yes, so we can do that. That we can say that there is going forward. The only thing I would caution on is the fact, and Councilmember Moore alluded to it, is the hard and soft power that, that comes from the two bodies and the roles in which they serve within the community. And so, for instance, as a hypothetical, because of scheduling, let's say, the same two or three council members show up at every planning board member, every planning board meeting and speaks, right, compared to the other members, that either the minority or the majority of others that are not able to in those, in those circumstances. The voices that are heard, the, the, the potential direction that individual council members may be providing on that may or may not come as a voice of council within that meeting may create potential ramifications. Not to say that that would be, not to say that it, that there are any legal issues around that. It's merely a perception that that may happen. So again, we are happy to do that if council provides us with that direction. I just caution from that perspective.
I just still think we need to try this. We need to give it the opportunity. Because in the past, we've had planning board work on stuff for months on end just to come in here, and that's just to really just nah, we ain't interested. And that ain't fair. You know, when, if we would have been here along the way, we might have could have said, you know, we understand what you're doing, but we know something you don't know, or we think you need to steer it more this way or this way, and speed their production times up, help us speed our times up. I just think it's almost like another business meeting for us and for them.
What you just described was our intention. I think everyone will shake, shake their heads back, if that was our not to be influenced and I get it.
Yeah, but I think if we ever feel like, and I would even suggest staff, if they feel like in any way we're leading them in a big way, or if we feel like we're getting steered by their, their committee, I think then we need to back off of that some. But I think with these hot topic items that we got pressure, and the pressure we're getting from a lot of our constituents and voters, we need to get on top of some of this the best we can as quick as we can.
I will say that it is nice to know council's thought in Sumerians, which direction even, even they're not, even if we as council are not driving the train, at least you kinda know what our vision is. And we can all be aligned, so.
And I'll be honest with you, there's times that I know stuff that would be nice for you guys to know. And I can't tell you that through the TV screen.
What if we did, if during our business meeting agendas, if the chairmen of the boards just came and presented what they were, what was going on in the committees?
Do that.
We asked for that, you kind of got all this pressure.
Right.
Michael does an amazing job of staying neutral. Felt like the majority should have a voice, but was large north nation. Case by case, basically.
And I agree, it's, it's okay for the, the chair or someone who's directed by the
To represent.
To represent the planning board. And then if you all show up, and if we've got questions we can ask individually. I remember you said this, what were you thinking, you know, if that scenario we need to get into?
So my only concern is if, if one or two of you went and you were questioned by the planning board, you just have to make it clear if you're speaking for yourself as a council member and you're not speaking for the council as a whole.
Sure. And there will be times where we can't be there at all on these special use permits and such. Because we can't seek any evidence or anything upfront. So we would have to avoid those meetings or step out before that section of your meeting got started. We'd have to be careful with that as well. Anything else on Bill three eighty-two?
Uh, if, sorry.
I just wanted to mention, because I heard this on the school government call today, as you've mentioned legislators getting busy when session starts, that they are actually recessed until January twenty-nine. So they convene on January twenty-nine. So there is a window right now when they should be more available, because they're not in session until the end of the month.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make that.
And, and just for my purposes here, again, trying to get direction from, with council consensus. Is it my understanding then that we, that council wishes for us to bring forth an amended resolution at the January twenty-third meeting? Would you, is it also your intention for any of the other next step items such as pursuing a potential local bill? Inviting the representatives of the area to the January twenty-third meeting, I've heard that as well. Anything else specific that we need to be aware of?
I would definitely like to talk in person to the local legislators before the local bill was even drafted, me personally. As far as this resolution, for sure, bring it back to the table here on to next meeting. And I'd also like for you and staff to reach out to any local municipalities, counties, or whatever, and see if they're planning on it anytime. Because they know or don't know, they might just not be willing to say, if they would jump on board with a resolution to send there. I think it would be important for you to give the description that you give me today as to how it affects some jurisdictions other than others, to make it, the whole council could get a lot of that.
Absolutely, happy to.
If, if you can say it again like you did to me, it made things come to light.
This may be a surprise to council, but I, I say a lot of things every day, and so, but it did take me a minute to remember and I got it now. But the, I heard some staff laughing, I think that's it. Yeah, so the way, the way I, I'm looking at this currently is that we have strange bedfellows potentially within this conversation. And it's about where an organ, where a community is within its life cycle, for lack of a better term. You know, if, for instance, if you look at, and I'm, I'm calling out a local jurisdiction, but I have no information about it other than just as an example. For instance, if you look at Laurel Park, it's a smaller location. If it's, if it's heavily zoned, if it's been over its lifespan, it has a lot of different zoning designations within, within that community, then they may not have as much of an impact, or they may have a different type of impact relative to a community like ourselves, which has, you know, again, newer organization, newer community, been around for twenty years, and is now starting to have those real conversations around future planning and zoning decisions, around parcels of property and also large swaths of the community. One of the examples I provided to the mayor earlier was around, for instance, you think about the city of Durham. And again, I've not spoken to them specifically about this either, but larger communities that have extraterritorial jurisdiction, that if they're using their three miles, for instance, that they have around their jurisdiction, to be looking at the future land use and planning and zoning decisions around that usage, they could, they would also be having to deal with this type of conversation around, around the session law, but in a different way. And so, the, every, and that's why I think the resolution in and of itself, the, with the draft is looking at it, trying to tell the unique story that is Mills River. Because every, as we, as we mentioned earlier, almost every community, if not every community, is gonna have a story to tell around this that's gonna be different from the other ones. That may mean that there is some resolution language that can bring them together. There may be different resolutions coming together with a letter that joins them together in some other capacity. There are multiple of options, and to the point that I believe, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned earlier about reaching out to other communities. They're working, my understanding is that they're working through what that looks like and trying to understand what the best approach is for moving forward.
And the reason I say that is we're getting political feedback for us to hold up on this resolution, to let's, let's get, let's come together as a bigger group. And I wanna make sure that's what's right for Mills River. That's why I ask if we, if we send this one now or in the future, can we still come on board with a bigger group? No problem, no questions asked. But that's why we're, we're a little reluctant. We're getting feedback from different municipalities a little bit higher up than what the town of Mills River might be on the food chain. And they're saying, just hold on to what you got, we're gonna all come together and we're gonna do this. Now, that's something you probably don't know, that's a political thing, but I think it's something you need to know. You know, Mr. Malacheck needs to know that. And, but in talking to the legislators, they're not saying they know anything about that, or if they think it's gonna have any effect in how the, it gets, the bill ends up getting tweaked down the road either. So it's just a big mess.
And if I may, one, one final note is, I think this, again, just speaking with the meetings that we've had here, that one benefit of the, of the meeting structure that we had in December is that we actually had this as a part of the discussion within that December meeting after the organizational meeting, because some actions have been had, and there are still communities that have, it may have met at the beginning of December when they had to have their organizational meeting, that have yet to have that meeting going into January, or has had that first preliminary meeting, which we may have had that discussion in December. So there, there, communities, my understanding is communities are at different points, getting their hands around this as well.
And I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna say it right here in front of those cameras in front of everybody, is I told those legislators, I told them, if y'all keep working this out to where Mills River can work with it and be comfortable with it, and, and make our citizens comfortable with it, and we want you to introduce a local bill for us, and you're not able to do that, then we're gonna tell all our voters that we need to make change. So that's the only other leverage we got. So as you talk to these people, you need to console in them how you feel about it. Because this is ultimately a big deal. A big deal for what the town of Mills River is gonna look like twenty years from now if we don't get ahold of it here pretty quick. So just keep that in your minds, everybody online, everybody that's watching the stream, need to pass it on to your neighbors, let them know what's going on, because a handful of people ain't gonna fix this problem. It's gonna take thousands of people to fix this problem locally. Anything else?
If, just, just to go back to that previous point, my, is, is it then the councils will for us to move forward, like in ordinance, I, I understand that, hold off on drafting any type of conversation around any local bill, but work towards having those conversations, bringing the, and trying to get the representatives here in January, is that correct?
Yes, because we already know that they're not back in session till the twenty-ninth, is it? So we got time there.
Sure.
This local bill is useless until anybody's able to present it in session. So we'll just hold off on that, let's hopefully get them in here to talk to us about it, to see if that's even a possibility moving forward with them. And in the next two weeks, things may start changing a little bit. Anything else council has here that I'm not mentioning?
For this item?
For this, yeah, for, well, for this, because we got potential, well, we're already in potential future item. So yeah, yeah, you can do, you can do that.
No, I was just gonna make my closing statement for the night.
Feel free to do that.
Now's a good time. Well, I'd like to thank our staff. We're very blessed with a great staff. And I also like to thank our board members. We got an awesome planning board, now that you got rid of some dead wood. I think that we're very blessed. And Brian and Jim, see, Mr. Ross was not here anymore. Please don't think that us not putting you on the board of adjustment is a reflection that we don't have confidence in you. We have confidence in you to assume any seat on that board. And that's where you've got to have strong alternates. Because, you know, next person up, when, when somebody's not there, you gotta step in like that. And so our confidence is still there in you two, and we're very grateful for y'all. Give a shout out to the D O T and the hard work they've done. And let's keep them in our thoughts and prayers tomorrow as the storm hits. As I was growing up, my daddy worked for the highway department, I never played in the snow with it. And my kids, when they were growing up, I worked for the highway department, and I never played in the snow with them. So I did play in the snow. That's, that's not with them, so thanks everyone that's stuck with us here tonight.
Anything else, closing statements or items for next future agendas? Bound to have some, we're early in the year. Not, we'll revisit this pretty much every time. And if not, I'll.
Make a mention to adjourn.
Adjournance.
Second.
Second, I got a first, a second, all in favor? Ah-ha.